I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes for the previous meeting. Motion in a second to approve of the minutes. Any additions or corrections to the minutes approved? Seeing none, all in favor of approval, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the bills.
Motion to approve.
The motion is second to approve the bills. Uh, the only question I would have is that including pickup and everything and kind of coming up with it. Further discussion on the bills. Question. Seeing none. Vote please.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Brule.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries. Financial reports. Candy.
Um, I have later down the agenda to do a couple of transfers to the LAC and then to Kristin's fund so I don't have to worry about it later down the road.
I think that ever looks good or something. We're actually running a little under something.
Yep.
Okay. Second. We have a motion in a second to approve the financial reports. Further discussion. Seeing none. Vote please.
Brule.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries. Treasurer's checks.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the treasurer's checks. Seeing none. Vote please.
Olson.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brule.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries and the treasurer's check approved. Approval of the agenda, if you can add.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. Further discussion. Seeing none. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries and if you can just approve. First up. Stacy.
I'm here.
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, still busy. Uh, eighty plus people last month and we're starting out pretty well this month. We're very busy the last few days. One thing I'd like to mention, uh, our reputation is taking care of veterans in the state of North Dakota. Had a gentleman from Arizona stopped in yesterday and asked to be taken and receive his benefits through my office and in North Dakota versus going through the Phoenix system. He is a former resident of North Dakota and, uh, just, I'd just like to mention that the word gets around North Dakota's taking care of veterans. So.
Their office is probably a little easier to find than in Phoenix, huh?
Well, they saw what this guy's been going through, uh, we'll, we'll take care of him pretty easily, I think.
Good job.
So.
Good deal.
Yeah, he's, uh, we took care of him yesterday and they're pulling, pulling. That's all I have. Uh, we're staying busy and, and if there's any questions, go ahead and roll that over there.
Questions goes clear.
Your numbers stay up pretty well, I'll state it.
We're, well, we're over eighty last month. We were averaging over a hundred most of this year. And I think as the summer comes, it might get fewer, but, uh, still, we're, we're up there. It's, it's, uh, quite a few people.
The veterans in Venti County, they're kind of finding out what time you're there, what day you're there and stuff.
I'm seeing very seldom that they're coming into that courthouse. They're coming here.
They come here.
Yeah, and, uh, it's easier access for here. Uh, they got stairs, uh, over there. Plus more days a week here.
So, I hope they're the same way.
Same way, yep. Although the numbers were up both, uh, places last month, but, uh, more than usual. But we're seeing both counties coming to Devil's Lake, uh, getting, taking care of that.
I haven't heard anything negative from the other preservative counties, so probably they're happier. Okay, any further questions for Stacy?
Thank you, Chris.
There you go. Thank you, Stacy. Bill.
Morning.
Good morning. Checking the weather.
Not quite awake yet, but morning. Uh, first off, when I got my calendar open, the sixteenth, a week from Saturday is our 4H first show achievement day. Did you want to include that in your calendar? Then on the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth is our 4H achievement days. The livestock shows the twenty-eighth and the static exhibits are the twenty-seventh. And also that full week, I will be in Grand Island, Nebraska with the 4H Shooting Sports National Shot Pen Team. So Cindy and Connor County will take care of the achievement day process. New this year for those showing animals is a new requirement that if they want to go to the state fair, they have to attend a YQCA training, which stands for Youth Quality Care of Animals. Mandated for the state fair. We have not implemented that here yet. Hoping maybe work out some of the things that might be flawed, so that would be something we do next year. We do have a training this coming Thursday. It can do for anybody that wants to go to the state fair this year. And that's all animals except horses. Everything. From beef to rabbits.
When are they gonna have it again?
At the extension office. Yep, that'll be the seventh and ten thirty.
Basically a in-house classroom? It's not gonna be a hands-on deal?
No, no, it's a, just talks about the quality care of animals. You know, we all do that anyway, but that's, that's what they want.
We're not gonna have one in Ramsey?
No, no, we're gonna work together this year. There was, with, uh, with the few that are going, we propose doing combined class. And next year we'll be in Ramsey.
All the 4H clubs noticed, I'm sure.
Yes, yeah, they've all been notified. Okay? One of the things that's been asked of us to ask you is if you'd be interested in having an hour meeting with our office sometime? Just to go over what we do and, and how they do it and all that kind of stuff, you know, because of the budgetary constraints at the state level. Make sure commissioners are all on board and, huh, I'm not saying we shouldn't have one, but I've said our commissioners are pretty well informed of what we do and how things go about it, but we, if you're interested, we would like to host you for an hour meeting sometime. Sometime this summer. Morning, noon, evening, doesn't matter. So sometime when you're ready, if you want to talk about that, let us know. Pick a date that would work for you and we'll make it work for us. Of course, at the higher ed, we'll, we'll get under talking another ten percent. You've heard that. Would the three percent continue to see if, I could put quite a strain on lots of different things. Yeah, lots of things. Um, I have a list today. What about that, huh? What did I do with that? Let me look at it one more time. Uh, two days commission meeting. Oh, one last thing as far as the horticultur side. I don't know if you've been hearing, but you're, maybe you have heard about the, either the forest tent or the eastern tent caterpillar that's attacking our trees in town. Mark's probably heard quite a bit about it. We need to be really proactive. When I first came here back in oh-five, Johnny Baker had a, had a farmstead that he was renting the farm. And he wondered what happened to his trees. It's like they've been sprayed and come to find out the tent caterpillars there completely defoliated the whole yard. So this can happen really, really quickly. So if you often see some webbing stuff on your trees, you need to get after it. Because it can, and it's been just very rapid around our community. I got calls a bit more stark where they're here in town. Northwood. So just keep an eye out. They like fruit trees first and then they'll move ash and others. Okay, so keep your eyes open for that if you see that. Now, thion's a good choice. Need to break the tent open, get the, make sure that you can get the, insecticide into that tent too, because that tent is very dense, very dense. And if you spray it, it'll just run off. So we need to get that opened up so we can also get those caterpillars.
Evergreens also?
No, not, not deciduous, non-deciduous tree, just deciduous. Yep. Uh, as far as cropping goes, things look good. You know, we've still got some odd farmers still planting, but all in all, things look good. Of course weeds is gonna be an issue with the weather that we've been having. Moisture and heat is always conducive. Any questions, comments? Just be reminded to be here that YQCA, if somebody wonders, um, that's it. One last thing, uh, registration this year for 4H. We are taking record books when they register on five to the fourteenth. If they do not hand in their record books, they cannot show them. We had some issues last year with record books and this will alleviate the hassle of the busyness of the day. And everybody's been made aware many times. So record books, the day they register. The fourteenth is the deadline.
Okay? Okay? Any questions for Bill?
Thank you.
Kristin, good morning.
Good morning. Uh, just a couple of things. Um, we've been really busy, um, in the northeast region of the state. Planning a regional exercise, a half mat exercise, and that'll be on the, um, first of August. And that'll be Grand Forks Fire Department, Devil's Lake Fire Department, City Fire Department, along with any other smaller area fire departments that can bring some of the manpower since they're volunteer, um, for this exercise. One other thing, we have our upcoming biannual LEPC meeting on the thirteenth of June at ten AM in the historical room. So if you would like to attend, please feel free. I have, what's that?
Uh, I think I have a joint board meeting that day in that historical room.
Maybe mine's the meeting room. I could've misspoke, Jeff. I'll double check. I have, I, I just wrote it down on that day. I guess I'll have to look at the, at the meeting room. Um, I did call Nathan, so I'm sure it's squared, squared away. There are, um, other planning meetings for the regional exercise for twenty, now, August first as well. I did apply for a grant and I did get approval or initial approval for active shooter, um, further training and courthouse security. Um, I think I mentioned that last month. Um, we won't get the complete okay, um, with it and the dollar amount that comes with it until sometime in late August, early September. But we did get one opportunity, um, come our way for some active shooter training for all county and courthouse employees. Um, and the price for it is just under twelve hundred dollars. Um, we would have someone come in from Train and B and sit down and do two one-hour sessions each. One in the morning, one in the afternoon. Um, and we can pick the date in the month of June, um, that would be best suited for everybody. Is that something, I would like to see that, we move forward with that, then that would be pre-grant work. Um, unless you felt it better to wait until I get approval from the grant. But I would like us to see if, I would like to see us move forward with some training now, um, versus waiting another three months. Given it's pretty reasonable, you know, cost, um, for the price of this training.
Yeah, Kristin and, excuse me, Kristin and I visited board last week and I thought, uh, I guess it was my opinion that, you know, for twelve hundred dollars, you know, it's, it's not overly expensive and, you know, the grant we have pre-approval, we don't know for sure that that's going to come through yet. So I, I guess I was of the opinion that it would probably be a positive thing to move forward with and get something on the books and get some training done. And then if we do get the grant, we can do some additional training at the top with those dollars. But I just, I figured we should bring the president of the commission.
Remind me how much should we?
I don't know. I won't know that.
Is there a possibility even on sort of the scale of what it could be?
We could get five thousand, we could get fifteen thousand, we could get twenty-five thousand. I'm really play, it's a hit or miss at this point. I don't know.
Sure, and it's a state grant?
It's a federal grant that comes through the state that will get distributed to local counties.
Yeah, so I suppose it all depends on how many counties or, or local entities go in and ask for the dollars or something. That'll give them, give them, give them, award a couple of grants.
It's a state homeland security grant, so they're not as heavily funded as they used to be. Um, they get cut every year if they're even offered every year to apply for it. And then they only accept certain things. And it was, I got an email back from the state stating that it was approved for active shooter training and courthouse security measures is what was approved. Cause I have been trying to ask for funding for the last couple of years for communication equipment as well, but that keeps being denied.
Okay. Further discussion on that, I guess. Anyone, well, I, okay, we're going to have a good outlet?
It'd be a good idea.
I guess.
Oh, yeah.
Isn't that mean like all employees? We thought like I would.
Yep. Absolutely.
Yeah, I think we wanna, we wanna train across the board so that, uh, if there's a situation where you're coming into the courthouse and, you know, there's something going on, that'll be covered in the training as well.
But, but this would be specific to, cause I know when, when I've done active shooter drills before, it's sort of building specific, right? So it's the courthouse. Would there be a chance to, to go do one with Kevin over there too?
I don't believe that they're going to do something specific or they come to shut, you know, at the highway department. It'll be more, it's more structured for what do you do in the event of, kind of gives some grab rules and key tips, you know, tricks of the trade of how you handle a situation, how you go about it.
Is it more general training versus specific toward the?
I thought it would be nice when this grant came through, you know, for myself to go to, you know, Alice Training, which is specific, you know, active shooter training, to be able to bring that, to do kind of a training trainer and bring that back to all of our employees here. Cause that's an expensive course, not one that we can send everyone to, but a few, and then we could come back and bring that information back. And I thought those grant dollars would come in handy there.
Okay.
Do you have a motion for that?
That's what I was just kind of wondering. Yeah. It's over a thousand.
I'd make a motion.
Second. No, motion in a second to allow Kristin to, uh, schedule active shooter training immediately. Further discussion. Seeing none. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
Well, sign that agreement and get it in today. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kristen.
That's all I have unless anyone has anything.
Any questions?
For me.
We have, uh, did you get any volunteers signups for that courthouse opening?
I sure did. I got about four or five. Couple of them are on the board here, but I got a few, so it works. Yeah, Bonnie was one of, Earl was one of them too, so, so it was good.
Well, one of, one of the things that was mentioned to me was, you know, the possibility of putting up some sort of carport outside for people that do come up here in a storm situation with their personal vehicle. And if we're not gonna cover hail damage or damage to their personal vehicle, that we can provide some sort of shelter either within our parking lot or something to that, to that effect. You know, whether it be right off the end of the generator building or, or something to that effect. You know, Roger and I have talked about it, you know, maybe putting a, uh, cover between the memorial building and the courthouse in the back entryway. You know, you'd have to design it so it'd be sloped so the water would run off and all that kind of good stuff. Roger was kind of concerned about what kind of snow would, have blown in there and how would he, you know, get out of it, uh, would be one thing. He also thought that, you know, he could jump the curb and drive under the little canopy in front of the building.
Way to be resourceful.
Bring his approval.
You know, but if people see that happening, um, who's to say that it wouldn't happen?
Now that the idea is out there.
I thought the idea of a carport too, it just had entered my mind, but I don't know if it's something we want to invest in or not, but it's, it'd be an option maybe.
That would be an option since Jeff, you're right, we aren't able to, county, are covering it with our county insurance for personal vehicles.
The people you talk to that come up and monitor the courthouse, do they have them served or what?
Yes, they have. That's one of the primary concerns of, uh, maybe not wanting to help or assist. Um, for example, um, last Friday night, we, the weather was fine, it was fine, it was fine, then all of a sudden we were in a thirty-minute, um, warning. And I called Roger, cause it was thirty minutes and it takes me thirty minutes exactly to get here. So I called Roger and then I called, um, the on-call number for the North Dakota School for the Deaf and both, um, facilities were open. Um, and alerted to the only thirty-minute window warning and it was done at ten fifteen and then it didn't come back. You know, and that might happen again late this afternoon into the evening because we're forecasted for sun, um, rainy weather again. But, uh, that, yeah.
Well, good. Glad, glad it's been taken care of. Thank you for that.
Me too. I'm glad it's working out.
And it's a discussion. We need all the carports though.
I think that one is something we can think about.
Be more a long-term thing than, than a short-term, but it's, it's something we can.
Does the county take on liability for vehicles that, for people who are injured?
We cannot.
We cannot, yeah.
Right.
And I had that question in all honesty, after we talked about that at the last meeting. What if it was a situation where one of our county employees, one of our vehicles didn't work or something and they had to take a personal vehicle and got in an accident with it? You know, buckle it up. What, I mean, what kind of situation would, would that put us in? You know, would they have to pay for their own deductible then at that point? And I haven't really gotten a clear answer.
Yeah, I, actually I've asked about, I've asked about it, cause, you know, I'm taking my, sometimes my own personal vehicle and I know, not in candy, but when Betty would do, she said, well, you're responsible for any accidents, you know, insurance, all, all of that, so.
Yeah, I think that was just kind of the policy. I don't know if that's allowable by the insurance or that was just kind of our policy previously, or I don't know.
I, I guess that more, more, I don't, I don't want.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm just saying, we haven't had a really, uh, the question asked at the insurance company. It's just, uh, more than anything for clarification sake.
Right.
Cause that does happen on the page. I mean, not accidents, although we have.
I wonder if personal vehicles. Thought came to my mind is that when they pay mileage, when the county pays mileage, should part of that mileage figured into something like this?
There's a potential, I think, for liability down to what's a consequence of type of an injury under the statutes. And so if it's something that's required, if it's something that's routine, if it's something that's out of the norm, but I think that potential liability could be there, um, just for example, when I go to court Monday morning at the law enforcement center and take my vehicle. If I crashed into somebody and my insurance wasn't of the nature to make them whole again, somebody could potentially look at an employer. I think so.
Yeah, that's kind of.
And that's where I think you need clarification from the insurance company about situations where you have employees taking their vehicles if you're, um, providing mileage. And then what else? You know, is there some type of a rider that could go on for a nominal price or where are you sitting at?
My thought was part of that mileage is supposed to be taken care of, that person's insurance. So I think that would be the county or the public, I'd be over the.
And it probably was in the average type situation. I'm just looking at worst case if something really tragic occurred. Whether or not, um, the employee's insurance could be enough or substantial enough to make another person whole. If not, there's going to be a kickback or if they can't. I gotta pop up to court. I get to court most of the day, but, um, things are going good up there. We're busy, summer's here, so a little more active. That tends to be the, the pattern. Um, conference was great, went to that conference in Michigan and came back with a full, uh, whole new outlook on things that relate to law enforcement, so. Thank you guys for the opportunity and anybody have some questions for me before I pop up to the courtroom? Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, yep.
Anything else for you?
Thank you.
Can you go next, can you name?
Five minutes, Roger, being, have to go?
Oh, we'll take that one. I have an estimate for the redoing the roof out here under the north door. I don't believe that's ever been done in that little overhang here since I've been here. And we've had a lot of leaking issues the last couple of rains and I have an estimate here from Tetca or Tarrick, whatever you want to call them, uh, for forty-two fifty. And, you know, they've certainly done good work force in the past. And they are the only ones around, this vicinity that does that type of thing, so.
You don't think we've ever done it, right? You've never fixed it or didn't go through it?
No, we've never redone that. We've redone the courthouse and everything else, but that one I don't believe has ever been done, not since I've been here.
Looks pretty rough up there.
It's, like I said, we had a lot of leaking issues and, so I think that we should get it redone before we really run into trouble.
You add it in your budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to, uh, except a bit from Tetca for forty-two fifty to do the overhang on the north side of the courthouse. Further discussion. Seeing none. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, okay.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Brule.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries. That's all you got, right?
Aye.
Thanks for our.
Uh, one thing that Bill mentioned, those tent caterpillars, those, those tents are tough. And, uh, there's more than one layer to it, ripping them apart. We had five of them out here popped up last Thursday night. Last Thursday, the, the curving sidewalks in front of courthouse were just covered with all things. And Friday, we had five tents and two trees up front. So. Hey, come on quick. Hey, Roger, um, Roger, before you leave, um, were you, do you know, were you and Milton gonna take a look at some, um, lake shore, or spent salt seater again this year?
Well, I'm gonna go check for the stuff we had last year. I haven't been out there yet, but, uh, as far as any other, uh, we had, uh, went around the boat game and fishing last summer and checked a lot of riprap areas and never found anything else, so. Hopefully, I guess we're kind of, if the public can find anymore, and hopefully they do not, you know. Well, the, the stuff that we did find, we were kind of attributing to either the trucks that brought it in or, or possibly the riprap they hold.
Right.
So, but we know some of that riprap came from out of this area.
Thank you. If you find any, let us know, please.
Will do.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we only have a couple of minutes here until we have, we have to, the eight-thirty, has to be the eight-thirty correct, we have a second, that discussion. Let's roll on to the, uh, site authorization then and get those over. We've got multiple site authorization for the. See, one, two.
Three for the rural fire, or four for the rural fire department, one for the one.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve the site authorization for chair of the women. Further discussion. Seeing none. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Uh, we'll move on to the canceled check.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve the canceled check, uh, for twenty-five dollars. It's over a year old. Further discussion. Seeing none. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Let's see. The beer liquor license, actually, I should ask Carrie, but, no, she left. That may take a little bit longer, unless, unless you guys want to tackle that now, it's a few minutes. I had a question on that, actually. The beer and liquor license transfer?
This is the one that we funded after last meeting, right?
No, that one was okay. Carrie checked out. Oh, no, that one's set under our, under our ordinance, I'm sorry. This is, uh, the bar and lobster is being transferred. And everything checks out, I think, from the standpoint of, look, the liquor ordinance, but my question was, the, uh, the notary public was notarized in Minnesota. Is that legal? Just curiosity.
The township signed off, right?
Yeah, but I'm just curious if, if it can be notarized legally from. Yeah, but I'm just curious if it can be notarized legally from Minnesota notary public, when it states on this sheet that it's state run code. I'm just curious more than anything. I mean, a notary is a notary to me, but, I mean.
A notary would, the township signed off.
Yeah, the township, township signed off on it. And they're gonna be living here, so. If it checks out, that would.
I move for approval.
Okay. The motion in a second to approve the transfer of liquor license for the flyaway bar in Webster, further discussion. Seeing none in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries, and it's eight thirty, so we will move to, uh, I guess it's technically not hearing, correct? Uh, the payment in lieu of taxes for Tronson Grain's expansion project. Morning, Pat.
Morning. I guess, thanks for having, having me, what we're looking at doing, we're adding flat storage addition, I believe you guys got some information on it. What we've ran into since we built the shuttle loader north of going is the way the BNSF secondary freight market works, at harvest time, it just gets loaded up, and the demand, it's kind of a, well, it's a secondary market, I guess, but. Uh, we're seeing rail costs up to three, four thousand bucks a car, which equates to, um, rough numbers, say thirty to seventy-five cents a bushel. So it's directly related to our birds, to the farmer. So we're going ahead, adding this flat storage building, which should kind of help offset some of the pressure of the harvest rush. That way, we're gonna be able to spread our freight a little, you know, wider, period of the winter months, try to kind of keep some of the cost down, which will make basis better to the farmers. It's, the size of it is probably gonna roughly double the size of the elevator. There's one commodity, it's just a flat storage, quants it basically, but it'll have a tunnel under it, so it'll be feeling empty at twenty thousand bushel an hour. But the, the main goal is just to kind of get rid of some of this two, three thousand dollar car, October-November stuff. And it should help offer two on the merchandising side, I think we'll have some more flexibility and price later programs for the farmers. And then, you know, it's better than corn piles out in the snowbank that are covered too, so, that's basically what we got going on. Any questions or anything, I guess?
No, I guess, we're talking flat, very, it should be very beneficial to the farming.
We're hoping so, we're kind of playing catch-up, as the yields have increased year over year too, I mean, hopefully we can continue that without a crop failure anytime soon, but, you know. It comes off just so fast with the farm equipment now too, that we're trying to keep the line short, get guys back to the field, and kind of offer some flexibility anyway.
I know the application, the school district is, you know, signed off on it, township is signed off on it.
Yeah, that's part of the new, the new legislation, that the taxing entities have to sign up for these different locals.
And when Tronson Grain applied for a tax incentive last time, we asked local school district that time also, and they had no problem with it, because they know how beneficial it's gonna be when, when it's up and running, and the tax rate runs out. We had Phil Ritter on the phone that time, and he was very beneficial, I thought, so. And township, I'm sure, seems to be very, very much in favor of it, yeah, I didn't see no problem with it at all. I can go ahead and make a motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second, and this is gonna be so, just to make sure everybody's square, wait, this is payment in lieu of, so you're still paying, what is it, a hundred dollars a year, or something, basically, correct? Back to what you were asking about.
Actually, no. What actually has occurred is, in the past, any exemption through this program has been the property tax exemption, and I've given you a list of who's received that in the past. However, legislation has changed since then, and since last time you received it, and in order to receive that, you have to be a primary sector business, and you have to be approved by the Department of Commerce. And in this situation, that didn't work. So we are looking at trying the other option, that is a payment in lieu of taxes, which has never been done in Ramsey County. So this would be opening up a whole new tax exemption for businesses in the county. And basically, that doesn't have a lot of parameters, as far as, with all of you setting them up, on who receives it or cannot receive it. But you would also need to decide how much they are going to pay in lieu of taxes, and how you're going to come up with that amount, and that type of thing. It, you don't see if Devil's Lake, I don't think, has done it either at this point. So it's a whole new game, so you would need to make some decisions on how to handle it, and how you want to come up with the amount that the, the business would pay. And how long?
There has to be a payment?
There, yes, actually, when we were filling out the application, the state.
Can't waive it?
The state said that there had to be an amount in that, that's where we came up with a hundred dollars, just a very, you know.
Yeah, it was a placeholder, but that's, that was kind of where my question came from, because I saw that there wasn't a placeholder figure, so I wanted to know the difference between how the program was functioned, payment in lieu versus things actually.
You know, I've called around to some other counties, Nelson, Benson and Towner haven't done anything with this, Nelson I didn't get hold of. I know Gary mentioned that in Fargo, in the larger cities, where they have done it, it's typically handled through a developmental committee, or for Devil's Lake or something, it's not really the tax offices.
But there's a fine in the handle of this way.
Yeah, it's legal.
By the county commission, it'd be well-placed if they handled it themselves.
I guess I sort of disagree, I feel, I feel that if we, you know, as, as you say, open a can of worms with no parameters, that's just one more example of this board shooting through the hip with respect to what it's doing. And I think it behooves us to have at least an understanding of the guiding principles of what we want to accomplish when we choose to do something like this. I certainly don't mind tax incentives, but seeing as, you know, you've been on, you know, the beneficiary of five years of tax exemptions, to this point. I mean, it raises some question in my mind, at what point, you know, are the, the actual taxpayers of this community gonna see benefit? And, and it scares me a little bit that we immediately jump in and say that we're gonna go ahead and do more tax exemptions, because if I run a substantially similar business, and I want to do an expansion project, now I'm gonna come in and do it too. And I think we need to be very cognizant with the types of precedents that we set, on what it means for doing business in this community going forward. So, you know, in principle, I'm not necessarily against the idea, but I do think that it needs to be refined and sussed out a little bit more than an immediate motion on the, on, you know, without further discussion or clarification.
Yeah, and in all honesty, that was kind of where I was leading to, is that I don't have a problem with the idea of what we're trying to accomplish here, it's just I think we have to have some type of parameters, so that we have a guideline going forward, so if we have other businesses come in and ask for the same thing, we'll have a guideline saying, this is how we're gonna treat them going forward. So that everyone is treated fairly and equally, essentially, under the same parameters, so to speak. And it appears as though, in the exemptions in the past, we've had some that have been treated one way, and some that have been treated the other way, and there really hasn't been a set, this is how we're gonna, and granted, they've been kind of far and few between, so I think that's probably why they've been treated, you know, like that. But I, we do, under how the payment in lieu versus an exemption works, we do have to set some type of parameter, and how we're going to treat it, essentially.
You set those types of parameters, and then it's up to the, the county commission has no control of how they want to do it. I mean, there's been a number of them done over the past years, and I'm sure there are numerous different county commissions who aren't sitting in his seat, so. It's how the county commission sees how it's gonna affect the community, affect the county. The last time Tronson Grain was approved of this, it was very, very beneficial for this area, not only Ramsey County, but Nelson County, Hedy County, Benson County, and the surrounding area. Now with Darcy going in with Tronson Grain, it also involved a number of producers in Towner County, so this has become an extremely large area. We have Lake Region grain, and they're more than welcome to come forward and do the same thing too, I have no problem with that whatsoever. If it's beneficial to our producers, and in the long run, it's gonna be very beneficial to the community and the economic development of this area. The school districts, they are very well aware of what they're gonna get at the end, you know. Coming over down over going to the Dakota School District is a huge benefit to that school district now, huge. So, Lake Region grain, everything they do, its benefits to school districts, its tax revenue raise. Don't handcuff these people when they're trying to do something like this, for the beneficial economic development in this area, I mean. Don't handcuff the county permission by policies and rules and stuff, if there's five people sitting here, I don't care which five are here. Give them some leeway to go ahead and make decisions like this without parameters, and all this to mismatch everything else. I don't see any problem with granting this whatsoever for a hundred dollar fee. The state already handcuffed us after the last one, and I was not aware of that until this one got dropped over.
I guess I'm not familiar with that.
And I am gonna come after the legislators on that.
What was, I'm not familiar with that situation, what was the handcuff there, I guess, the fact that it can't be exemption, it has to be in lieu now, or in lieu of?
The one granted a two dollar below.
Yeah, so they changed the parameters.
And I guess, from, you know, from my perspective, I'm certainly making no argument that Tronson has a benefit to this community, I think that that, that speaks for itself, there's no question in mind.
And certainly not asking for any handcuffs or anything, we're just looking to move forward with the, the cost of steel and concrete is not decreasing one bit, so, you know.
And Terrance don't have that.
Not, not trying to sneak one.
No, and I don't think anybody thinks you are, it's just a matter of, I, my thought is, and I'm not saying we need to hamstring ourselves, but I think it's reasonable to have an expectation from the commission level here, that if Tronson comes in today and wants to do this, and we give them a certain deal, essentially. That if CHS or somebody else that's in the county wants to build something, that they'll get the same deal.
Yeah, we don't have no problem.
And that's all I'm saying, is I think we have to have parameters, this is the deal we're gonna have, that we're gonna do the in lieu, and it's gonna be a hundred dollars, and that's what it's gonna be going forward, or are we gonna set it up so it's maybe a staggered thing, because it looks like sometimes we've done a hundred eighty, sixty, forty, twenty? That's all I'm, where I'm coming from, is I just think we have, not necessarily a policy, policy, but it has to be a thought process on how we're gonna treat all of them going forward, so that they're all essentially equal.
Go and handcuff the commission and make a decision?
Yeah, but the issue is, is what happens when we give a separate deal, and then we get sued, and it doesn't matter whether we're, you know, actually in the end guilty of something or not, but I'm saying that when you start treating different entities differently, just based on how we're feeling that day. I mean, that's, that's not the right way to do governance either, right, everybody is equal, and, and in order to ensure that we treat people equally, we need to have something in place to ensure that that happens. The least guiding principles of nothing else.
I really don't think that, that policy handcuffs commissions, you know, because each commission is free to set their own policies, go in and change that. You know, if they come in and after an election and say, you know, we really don't like this policy, we're gonna come up with our own. You know, so they're free to do that, it just kind of gives us a baseline of treating everybody fair, kind of thing. Mr. Tronson, could you tell me, if you were to be denied, would you still go forward with the project?
Yes.
But you'd pass maybe on that, that tax back to the consumers?
Indirectly, you know, it's a tough question to answer, but, I mean.
Well, you know, I kind of, the Paul Harvey school of thought is that businesses don't pay taxes, they're consumers, and, you know, they just pass on, keep the cost of taxes back to their, your customers, and, you know. Kevin, do you have an idea of what kind of money that the county had put into that road for the extra traffic, the one up to Tronson's?
Like either, I don't think they're telling with the engineering?
Because we had built, put some heavier duty road bed in that area, correct?
The state covered how much of that, ninety or ninety-five percent of it?
They covered a good deal, yeah.
They covered a good deal as well. And.
That's a new point.
Yeah, and I think part of that comes down to too, is, when I'm thinking about the, when you think about property taxes, and you think about an exemption or an in lieu of payment situation. Every time you approve or disapprove of something, it's, it comes down to the question of what are the property taxes actually paying for? And, and the property taxes in a situation like this, specifically at an elevator out in the country, are gonna pay for fire protection, sheriff's protection, road infrastructure, basically. It is, is what the taxes are paying for, obviously, and then everything else that dumps into what the county does, but those are the three specific things. In adding something to your existing physical plant, none of the things are gonna change, fire protection, the costs aren't gonna go up, really, I mean, it's just a big concrete bunker, sheriff's protection costs aren't gonna go up. Road infrastructure is already there, and it's a good quality position, and nothing's gonna go up there, so I don't have a problem with giving an incentive to let you, to help you out in this project, and get this project done, I think it's a positive thing, I just think that we have to have a set structure for how we're gonna do it moving forward, that's all. And if the commission as a whole is fine with doing a hundred percent, essentially, other than the fee for five years, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that necessarily, but I think we as a whole, as the five of us, should come up with a baseline for, is that what we want to do, do we want to do a step system, do we, you know, just so we have an idea of what we're gonna do going forward, that's all. And like you said, I don't think necessarily having a baseline policy handcuffs us, it's more of a, this is how we're gonna treat it, until we look at going forward, and go, well, this isn't necessarily working anymore, I mean, Fargo's going through it right now, talking about special assessments. They were a seventy-thirty split, they went to fifty-fifty, the people didn't like it, they started to have the discussion, they moved back to a seventy-thirty, now they're having a long-term discussion. And it's a constantly changing parameter of how the entity is gonna be business, essentially, but having that baseline is usually a good place to start. That way, next time something comes in front of us, we're not going, oh, what are we doing? So, further discussion, I guess. We have a motion on the floor in a second to approve it with the hundred dollar fee, correct?
Correct, it's in the application.
Yeah, so it would be, it would be, yeah, and I'm just, looking at the application, it was, it was gonna be five years, a hundred dollars per year was the payment in lieu. And after five years, the hundred dollars, and it goes back to the regular property taxation at that point in time.
And I definitely think Tronson Grain would be up for anything, I mean, that was really very just a general number that we had to fill in the blanks, you know.
Yeah, and if we're looking at from the aspect of, let's see here, I'm trying to remember where I saw the number at, I never had all this last name, a lot of stuff here. We're essentially assuming that after, after it's all done, built and everything like that, we're gonna be looking at right around twenty thousand dollars a year in taxes on that portion of the business, correct?
If it was valued at.
If it was valued, yeah, but it probably won't be valued at what the construction costs are, because they, it never, it'll probably be about half that much, you know, because that's usually how that works.
I can see this is true economic development, true, I mean, we're not taking a shot in the dark here at all, I mean, not whatsoever. This is gonna benefit the producers in how many counties, I named them already, I mean, it's, covers a huge area, and those dollars end up coming to Devil's Lake, coming to the Lake Region area, I mean. The state has already handcuffed us, and I'm not happy about that, but they stepped in the county business and started telling us how to tax our people, and that's not right, that's not right whatsoever, so.
Is there any willingness to agree to a step system?
We're open to any.
Yeah, I think.
And, and the reason why is, is that I, if, if the deal as written stands, I can't support the idea of a. can't support the idea of a business not paying taxes to the community it exists in for ten years.
We're not talking ten years, we're talking five.
Yeah, but it already been five. Yeah, but this is a completely different.
I, I understand that. I, I, I understand that, but, but I also feel that it's just, it's just not, unless, unless. You should, Mr. Wakefield, you should go out and ask farmers from here to whatever direction you wanna go from Devil's Lake, and ask them if that shuttle loader out there going wasn't beneficial to them in the last five years. I mean, it was very beneficial.
And, and again, I, I make no, I make no claims that it wasn't.
And my, my understanding.
So you're not truly not disagreeing with the motion we made in two thousand and twelve, then, to go forward with the tax incentive there?
I, I, I would have preferred that that tax incentive be stepped, yeah.
Oh, okay.
You know, I, I, yeah, I understand that. I'm, I'm simply saying that, that if, you know, I, that, that because you, you want to give the incentive, sure, so that the year that the project is done, sure, you don't have to pay, you know, basically anything. The year after it's done, presumably it's generating you more income as a business, and it's doing the good things you want it to do for the community, and then at that point, you should pay some taxes as you're working off the debt of that, and then more, and then more, until you're at a hundred percent. I see no reason to do, no, basically none for five years. To me, to me, that's not fair to the taxpayers of this community. And, and I understand your point, and I agree, like I say, Tronsen's done great things, and I'm not making that a claim that they're not. I'm simply saying that we, we have people pay taxes, whether they're businesses or individuals, for a reason. And unless we're here to make guiding principles so that you can explain to me why we're vacating that reason, if we don't have a reason to vacate the reason, then I can't support it, and that's just how it goes, for me, anyway, but I appreciate your point.
I think too, if, if you weren't able to make a decision in the next ten minutes, you could probably approve that they could receive the payment in lieu, and then they could commence building, and then we still have time to decide what that is, you know, to make the decision on what the exact amount is or what you want to do.
My understanding on the application, which you have now, just twenty times, but thank you, but with that on expansion, it needs to be in place if something gets granted by the time you occupy it, which we're hoping to be done this fall, if that's any help of anything.
You were ready for harvest, would be my answer.
Yeah, um, the way the crop's looking, absolutely, but, so we've, we've got a tunnel poured in the ground, and it's, you know, the, the slab of the building hasn't started yet or anything, so they, the way I read the application, that's, but I could be wrong.
Okay, further discussion, yes, we have, we have a motion on the floor to, to allow, essentially, I can't say one hundred percent, but one hundred dollars payment per year for five years. Payment in lieu. And, and just for the sake of discussion, you know, assuming you're right around ten thousand dollars a year, which would be half of the, you know, would be the, if you stepped it, it would be ten eight six four two, would be the, the step or the payment, so, but, by using a full one hundred percent essentially versus stepping at one hundred eighty, sixty four to twenty, you're for going around twenty four, twenty thousand dollars worth of taxation over that five year period by allowing the one hundred percent of the step system, give or take, it's obviously a fall apart figure. And, and, and like I, like I said previously, I, I don't, I'm not necessarily opposed one way or the other, I'm just coming from the aspect of, you know, I think we should have an idea of what we're gonna do, assuming this possible could come in front of us again. What it comes down to is I'm not gonna deny Tronsen doing this over twenty thousand dollars, but I, I think we should have a, the idea of a policy in place for how we're gonna treat them going forward, so that way we're not, you know, second guessing ourselves, so to So further discussion.
Well, I'm the only businessman that sits on this commission.
Well, I disagree with that.
Well.
I'm a businessman, I'm a farmer.
Well, I.
I make business decisions every day.
But.
But yes, I, I think that you're in the.
I learned long, long ago that when the farmers have money, the whole community has If he's gonna trickle back this money that he's gonna save on freight to his farmers, his farmers are gonna have a bigger profit margin, they're gonna come to town and they're gonna spend money. And, you know, the, these tax dollars that we're talking about, his, his little trickle back money is gonna put a lot more money into the community than, than this is. I mean, this, this is huge. I mean, businesses always get blamed for not paying taxes, and I'll guarantee you, they all pay taxes, and they pay this tax, and that tax, and a sales tax, and a permit, a permit for this, and a permit for that. It, this is, this should be no discussion, this really should be no discussion at all. This man is investing money in our community to help better our community, I just, I don't see where all this conversation comes here. And, and in five years, we're gonna get it all back anyhow. I just.
Well, you're gonna get it all rolled.
Well, yeah, because we're gonna get it all back. I mean, there were members before that voted against his original plot, and now there's, there's, there's a billion dollar, billion dollar business out in the middle of a dirt field, that was a dirt field.
No.
Yeah, what taxes would that bring?
Yeah, and what would the taxes of that bring?
And, and I don't disagree with that at all.
The school district was the biggest loser of the whole thing in Lakota, and they had no problem with it. Now they're the biggest winner.
Absolutely.
They're, they're very happy with that shuttle loader.
And, and I, and I have no, like I, like I said, I have no problems with the fact that we're essentially four to one, five years of taxation for a long-term benefit, essentially is what it comes down to, but the parameters of how we're doing this are, this program is structured essentially just for commercial businesses or is it for residential?
Commercial.
Just for commercial. Is it for expansion projects, or is it for new projects? Is it value added, is it not? I mean, what's the param, I mean, that's my question, because say for instance, a commercial business walks in, and wants to put something out on Highway Two in a week, what's the structure for how we're going to treat that commercial business versus this commercial business, or the next commercial business? Because this is a no-brainer to me, but the next one might not be a no-brainer, and if we don't have some type of structure in place, then we pretty much handcuff ourselves.
No, we don't. Commission can still make a decision, and if you don't wanna make decisions, sit in these seats, then don't sit here.
I don't, I don't think we're putting out a decision, I think we're, I think we're having the discussion to make a decision now.
Make a decision in an individual way.
I, I'm not comfortable with that at all, that's my problem.
But how can you make a decision on, on parameters on something that you don't know what's coming, because you do have principles.
You, you just have to have a baseline for how you're gonna do it, that's my point.
This is economic development, the biggest way.
I'm not saying it's not, and I, I'm not saying I'm opposed to what's in front of us, I'm just saying that I, I think, you know, this is, was kind of what I figured was gonna happen in this discussion, let's put it that way, in terms of how should we handle things going forward, and if we're comfortable with what this is, I'm fine with that, so. We have a vote, two minutes until we have to move to our new thing, we have further discussion. I'm the motion on the floor.
Well, if, if, if this gets called through, vote, and I will have to vote no on it, but I want to clarify why. I stand sort of within the same vein as Adam, which is I'm not opposed to economic development, and I appreciate what you do, and I'm glad to hear that you're expanding your business operations, and I applaud you on your success as a business owner in this community. But, as I sit here as a county commissioner, I'm looking towards the success of the county and the community, and I don't believe that this commission supports that by making decisions based on something other than principle. Now, my, my colleagues at this table, I think, are coming from some set of principles, it's just not always clear to me what those are, or how we can apply those in a uniform and fair manner to everyone who chooses to do business in this community. And until that happens, I don't feel comfortable extending an olive branch to anyone where in the future I may not be able to extend that olive branch for, for no reason. So as long as everyone who's here understands that, I feel comfortable. Calling for the vote.
Okay. I don't know if that, we can call the question, but further discussion. Seeing none, I will call for the vote, roll call, please.
Fred?
Aye.
Holson?
Aye.
Frank Hill?
No.
Brown?
Aye.
Light. Aye. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you very much. I understand that as the process has changed, that it kinda creates a whole new discussion there.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you very much.
Where are they at? Nine AM, you're going to, let me get my sheets here, I gotta organize. Yes, I realize that, that's why I'm meeting my sheets, so I'm ready to roll here. Okay, so I would entertain a motion from within the commission to adjourn our current meeting, and then reconvene as the county board of tax equalization.
So.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, further discussion? Seeing none, all unfavorable by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries, and we are adjourned as the commission, commission now adjourned as the county tax equalization committee. Uh, let's see here, I'll turn it over to Vek for starting, I guess, it's probably the quickest and easiest way to do it.
Sure. Your first page in your packet has the agenda, so we can just follow through on that, and first, it says, uh, just some recommended motions that you could use, just to get through the process, and it would be to approve the city assessments as presented, Gary has provided in your packet the first pages of what the city has done. Gary, talk, you play.
Gary.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I'll be short with this, I, you have a packet that we put together every year for the city commission, city commission held their board of equalization and approved all of the changes that were made. There wasn't a, wasn't a real big year for changes, we, we do a market study every year of the commercial and residential property to see where the sales ratio would, compares our value that we placed on it from last year to what it sold for, so we get an idea of where we're at, how we're, how we're treating it. The state gives us a, a margin between ninety and a hundred percent for an overall median average, so off of that, we usually will make our market adjustments. This year, we did not make a market adjustment, our sales ratio, our commercial came in at about ninety-four, and our residential, we were at about ninety-two. So we still did a lot of changes, but we didn't do a market across-the-board change that wasn't necessary this year. One of the first years in ten years, probably, I think you get, last year it was a five percent, the year before it was a nine percent, basically analyzing the sales every year, we're chasing it. Hopefully, we continue to chase it up and up now, things kinda stabilized a little bit. I, I think it may sit there for a little bit, depends on economics and what goes on, but we'll continue to monitor it every year. The one part that you might find interesting is the TIPS that we've started doing, the taxing from the finance districts, basically the city's using those to build new areas, put in infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, not, not build buildings or do those things for the private, but to get the infrastructure in place. So about halfway through the packet, you'll see a list of the infrastructure, the TIP districts, we have a number of them, right now, we have thirty, thirty-five million, almost thirty-six million dollars in new construction that's right now sitting out there paying a, a payment of new tax, or excuse me, a tax increment that's paying off bonds that was used to build this. As those districts are paid off, it's, it's like the elevator you were talking about, as those are paid off, that new value will come in and it'll go into the normal tax base.
What was that for you? Where are you sticking out?
Right now, there's the, there's thirty-six million off there.
Basically, what you call it is new build, right?
Pretty much, yeah. The, the increment district is, when a, when a district is created, you take the existing value within it, decrease it, the county does, county out there, and then any new growth, new buildings, new, new value, that's the increment. And that part that generates the same tax, you, you get taxed the same, I wouldn't know it as a homeowner or a business owner, I'll get the same tax that, that I would pay, but it's going to the counties and sending it back to the city for the, for the, for that district, until the bonds are paid off.
And max life of the bonds could be what, fifteen? I can never remember a lot of them.
I think a lot of them are fifteen, maybe twenty on some, depends on what the projects are. But we've had districts, we had a big one, Academy Village, that was our first TIP district twenty-five years ago, and that's been paid off now for, I'd say, five, ten years. All of that value that is in Academy Village, where the apartments and all of that, that's on the tax rolls as any other district now. Basically, our growth this last year was, was about two percent. Most years, we were at five to nine, somewhere in that area. We, we did some reappraisal work, but again, you know, that's ten thousand here, five thousand here, it takes a lot of reappraisal work, where if you do across-the-board, a market adjustment, that creates a lot of value, because you're taking it on the whole valuation of the city.
Gary, two percent, I'm surprised you had that.
No. We, we had many years of, of great growth, but I also remember, there was many, many years where we were lucky to get one percent, a half a percent, but it was always positive. We, we never, that I remember in the years I worked for the city, ever went backwards on value. The values have either stabilized or continued to rise, so. I've just got some charts and stuff that I give to the city commission to show them where we're at, where we've been over the last number of years, as far as taxable value and true and full value. And then there's lists of the exemptions, we always have the commission approve all of our property tax exemptions, which are the charitable's, the homestead credits, the veterans exemptions, and one blank exemption. Answer any questions if you have any?
It's kind of, kind of incredible that the, the total true and full valuation in the city has doubled in fifteen years, basically, with the bigger inflation in fifteen years. So I guess it's, it's twenty percent over the top, which means housing is, is just value even higher, it's moving quicker. Okay, further questions, so, so Gary, on the city valuations and tax structures? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the city assessments as presented. We have a motion in a second to approve the city assessments as presented, further Seeing none, all favorable by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. And this is a, is this a, this a public hearing, correct? We can take public comment at any point in time if anybody has a question or a comment, correct? Okay, number two. Back to you.
Yeah, if you start, it looks like about page twenty-five is where our, our information begins for the county, and it's the motion to approve the values of the townships contracted for coming or assessing. This year, we had thirty-eight entities that we assessed, we had thirty-eight meetings here at the courthouse, and everything went well, as far as that. Our, we are, have been doing, similar to what Gary spoke about, for a number of years, we haven't been doing blanket increases, but instead reassessing each property each year, so some may not change, some may even decrease, and some may increase, just based on getting them accurate to what on the market is, and so by doing that, we're able to stay within the state's tolerance for that. And so we have a list of the major changes that occurred, and we also have our list for the homestead credit, the disabled veterans, and the property tax exemption listed for
Okay. And what townships aren't contracted with us?
Um, townships of Sullivan's, Stevens', Minnewakken, the cities of Starkweather and Hampden.
And they're do...so they're all doing their own?
Yes.
Okay. So then those five would not be included in this motion?
Not, they'll be in the next motion, yes.
Okay. Uh, feel good questions for, uh, evaluations presented, uh, as well as the, uh...
Move to the first one.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, uh, values of the townships contracted to the county for assessing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Look. Further discussion?
You've been quiet.
Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. On to the next one. Approving values of the townships that provide their own assessors or data collectors whose values were approved by a certified assessor.
Yes. Um, we still have two, uh, certi...or assessors that we use. One is Mike Beamer and one is Dale Jamza. Uh, they each do. They both, um, came in and worked with the office and both made a lot of changes this year and, um, basically did the same thing as the rest, moved blanket increases, but reassessed individual properties and that type of thing.
Okay. Are those lists then included within, within the Ramsey County in your list?
Yes.
And there was nothing there that really jumped out, so... Okay.
I'd move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve, uh, the townships that provide the assessors. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Indicated land classifications?
Um, page thirty-three. That is the state, um, inundated land application that, uh, you can file for if the land is classified underwater. Uh, we have a list here, it has not changed, it's still people that have received it in the past.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Okay.
We have a motion in a second.
And a second. Motion in a second to approve the inundated land, uh, list.
Further discussion?
Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So what's committee recommendations?
That's page thirty-four. Um, you'll see there's a few...a list of a few parcels. I think that actually just entails two people, but they brought in, they have owned numerous parcels. And, um, along it, you can see the recommendations. They really did not make many changes. I think they made two small ones. Um, it...it just has gotten to be less and less, I suppose, with it getting a little drier and having time to...that we've gone through this. It just seems to be less and less for them.
Okay. Yeah, we made the... Well, we did, but the SOX committee made the change a couple years ago. There was a WRP or a wetland payment on it that they were no longer going to, uh, consider those properties, so it's...
I'm gonna take that on there too for you.
Yep. Okay. Further discussion? Do we have a motion to approve those recommendations?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second.
Aye.
We have a motion in a second to approve the sales committee recommendations on agglent values. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Last, uh, motion for a percentage change to eight values for the county as a whole.
And that would be hugely fine, I forget knew this, I think, back in January, February, somewhere along that. Um, last year, we were at six oh five point two three. Uh, the state estimate for two thousand eighteen is six sixty point oh one. Uh, they do allow the ten percent allowance. Uh, typically, in the past, you've tried to stay around the ninety-five percent, as that's what we've tried to do with in the residential commercial, just so it's a kind of safety net there. Uh, I...I noticed that on the copy we gave you is my cheat sheet, so you can see where I kind of very quickly must have been just calculating some different options, um, if it was a one percent, a two percent, or no, you know, that type of thing. Um, I, you know, it looks like a two or a three percent increase would definitely, um, keep you close enough to that ninety-five, if that's what you wanted to do. Uh, but you are within tolerance, so it's up to the board, what they would like to do.
Did you say that the city did two percent, uh, already that?
That sounds great to me.
They did, yeah, ninety-four percent something like that. Uh, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to increase agglent values of blanket two percent to get us closer to that ninety-five percent tolerance. We have a motion in a second, further discussion? Just one question. So it'd be six hundred and seventeen, what I do then, right, Pat? How's your cheat sheet?
It'll...it'll go into this year's?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
So it'll be just the six seventeen thirty-four versus the six oh five twenty-three, what we had last year?
And it'll, once it calculates with the computer, it'll be around six seventeen.
Yeah.
It might be thirty-four.
Ballpark.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we just want to increase yours put on. Okay. Anything else to come before the county equalization committee? Seeing nothing, I would entertain a motion that the county equalization committee, uh, where I'm looking for.
Adjourn.
Adjournance, thank you. Losing my mind. Adjournance and, uh, we re-adjourn as the county commission.
A motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and we are...
Thank you, guys.
Now, we adjourn as the county commission. Thank you. Reconvene, yes. Re...re...reconvene, isn't it, thank you. And we're right on the knot, I think, for the notice of sale.
Do we have parcel number?
Yeah, the...the underwater lots we built in the past, that would destroy yourself.
What are we looking for?
These underwater lots here. Does he have it already?
Is that on a tab?
Yeah, there's a tab there.
There's a tab.
Ooh.
Right side of it already?
That one? Oh, one of the right, oh, here you go. How do you get that? So do we want to put in the parcel number each time we do this, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Start with, I'll read the notice of sale, then I'll give you...
You can read, you'll read the legal description.
Do you have a role? Bring it up here and I can type it in, that way I don't have to tell you. I probably need that, probably need the...
You go around, Stu.
I need a screen in front of me, that'll be able to see what I'm looking at. I'm kind of blind to start with. Okay, I'll read the notice of sale to start with, and we're looking there. Ramsey County will be selling three parcels of land, lot six, nine, and eleven. Block one, Stormy Brothers subdivision. Uh, ID numbers oh five four four one oh, oh two six eight five oh oh oh. Oh five four four one oh, oh two six eight eight zero zero zero. And oh five four four one oh, zero two six nine oh zero zero zero. All located in Creole Township. The parcels will be sold to the highest bidder, but not a sum less than the minimum sale price of two ninety, two fifty each for lot six and nine, and three fifty seven fifty each for lot eleven. Sale will be held today, Tuesday, the fifth of June, twenty eighteen, nine fifteen, at Ramsey County Commission Meeting Room, First Court Courthouse, five one four fourth Avenue, Northeast Unit Six, Devil's Lake, North Dakota. And if you read that, you should be here. So we will start with parcel six, if I can figure out where my mouse is here.
Here on.
There we go. So I gotta put in the ID then. Do we need the spaces in there? This server might be bad at me. I'm not typing correctly.
No results found?
No results. It's good I didn't catch my beginning. Down here. Like I said, I can't see that far. Okay. Oh, five. Well, it's because we don't need all those back numbers, that's why. Two, two, six, eight. Well, it's not looking in.
I was gonna turn it on, I'm trying to find those.
Well, I normally, you cut it, cut off the back ones here. Yeah. I'll let you get it. They're all up Stormy Brothers Sub, I think everybody knows where they are. They're underwater. There we go. We'll let Kevin hold in there, you can find what we're looking for. Just so my ballpark, people know what we're talking about. Seeing it's gonna be block one of Stormy Brothers.
There's a left there, Kevin, the bottom.
There's second edition here. There you go. Where's...this must be block one, then? So, that's block three. Well, that's...
So, of course, it's just like it, it'll tell you where you're at.
There's block one right here. So number six, we're starting with, I believe, that one right there.
It's nine eleven.
Oh two six eight five. That's right. Okay. So that is the prime piece of real estate that we're looking at.
Great for a houseboat. And it's close to the shore, anyway.
Yeah, a little bit. Uh, so I guess I will open up the bidding on lot six of Stormy Brothers subdivision, and the minimum bid would be two ninety, two fifty. We have one bid. Can you read the name right away? Or just until we're done? Till we're done? Okay. Do we have any further bids? We have a two ninety, two fifty bid, any further bids? I'm not gonna auction here, but I'll ask a third time, because I think that's legal. Any further bids? Seeing none, sold. For two ninety, two fifty, two... What's your name, sir?
Rick Shaw.
Okay. Lot six is sold for two ninety, two fifty. We will move on to lot nine, uh, for the same minimum sale price of two ninety, two fifty. Do we have any bids at two ninety, two fifty? We have a bid at two ninety, two fifty. Do we have any further bids? Any further bids? Any further bids? Seeing none, sold. For two ninety, two fifty, lot nine, to the same buyer, as lot six. Lastly, we have, uh, lot eleven in block one, and the minimum sale price on this is three fifty seven fifty. Do we have any bids on lot eleven? Any bids on lot eleven? Any bids on lot eleven for three fifty seven fifty?
If this doesn't sell, does it just go back?
Well...
I was expecting someone else to be there.
Yeah, I thought she'd be there.
I'll tell you, I'll bet on it. And if she gets...she can contact me if she wants it.
I think that would be sold, but... Let's see, I think you can sell it if you ever want.
The background on these are buying for the water rights, or water... To the raw water rights, yeah.
Okay, we have one bid for three seven...three fifty seven fifty on lot eleven. Do we have any further bids? Any further bids? Any further bids? Seeing none, sold for the same buyer for three seven...three fifty seven fifty. That concludes our sale.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And you can just stop in after the meeting and talk to Nathan again, and I'll take care of it. Okay. Dr. Roger? Liz?
Good morning.
Good morning, morning.
I, uh, I think I've covered most of everybody on the phone, since I work in, um, public health and I'm a subject of youth, um, prevention and education. Uh, when I first started doing that, one of the first things that came to my mind, and I started in my, uh, investigating and, and working as I kind of go here, um, you know, North Dakota's got a lot of great things going for it. Uh, I don't think we any older want to be the number one state in the country for binge drinking and drinking. Um, that's something I think we can pass back on to somebody else. Um, I did give you folks the updated information on DUI arrests from the North Dakota Driver's License Bureau, and this is for two thousand seventeen. And with all the information we know and being on the national news about the, uh, problems that we have here in, in North Dakota as far as underage and binge drinking and DUI arrests, uh, we continue to go in the wrong direction. In two thousand sixteen, there were four thousand two hundred and forty-five arrests. Um, in two thousand seventeen, we've now jumped to four thousand seven hundred and sixty-two. Uh, but the most disturbing figure is the amount of alcohol content people have in their system when they're a student. And I'm gonna go right specifically to Ramsey County. In, let me see here... Uh, Ramsey County went up from one hundred DUI arrests in two thousand sixteen to a hundred and four in two thousand seventeen. Um, out of that, a lot of those arrests, forty-nine of them were three times over the legal limit. And thirty-five of them were two times over the legal limit. Um, clearly, you know, we have, we have an issue. Um, and as I said, we're not going in the right direction with even the information uh, that's getting out to the communities, uh, and the state in general. Um, three years ago, I instituted a, uh, responsible beverage server training program that we, that we continue, uh, here in, in Devil's Lake. Uh, and also, underlying areas can certainly come into ten. Um, right now, we have over three hundred people server trained. The Devil's Lake Police Department does it at no charge. Uh, Officer Corey Gilbertson is the trainer. He's a wonderful trainer, he really knows his stuff. Um, and we are very pleased at how many of the local bars here have, have gotten on board with, with responsible beverage server training. Uh, on June first, mandatory responsible beverage server training became effective in the city of Devil's Lake. So it is now mandatory for those people that either serve, dispense, or sell alcohol must take a responsible beverage server training course within seventy-five days of their employment. That gets time for the business to, to see if that employee is gonna work out in the long term. And it also gives Officer Gilbertson a chan...a chance to, you know, go in a flow of, of classes uh, that, that he will be establishing and has continued for three years now. Um, a little bit of, of information from, um, Chief Joe Panowski was that they did some compliance checks in Devil's Lake a month ago. And, uh, they did a round of compliance checks where seven out of eleven businesses failed. They served to a minor. Okay? Um, it was decided at that point that this was more of a...
One question, one question.
Sure.
Seven out of...
Seven out of eleven businesses failed.
And these businesses all have these trained people in there?
Well, that's where I'm going.
Okay.
That's where I'm going. So, and obviously, this is prior to mandatory. So a week later, they did another round of checks, different bars. Eight out of ten passed. All eight of those people had taken responsible beverage server training. All seven of the others in the first round had not.
In other words, it works?
Well...
Or is it helpful?
And we think it's helpful. We don't think we know it's helpful. You know, the question that always comes up to me is, well, you know, people drink at home, too. Well, yeah, they do. You know, we, we can't monitor everybody in the world all the time and what they're doing in their lifestyle. What responsible beverage server training brings to the table is giving those people who dispense, sell, and serve alcohol the tools they need to do their job the best possible way that they can do it, that's looking for underage drinkers, handling somebody who appears that they're starting to now have, have more alcohol than they, they should consume, teaching those bartenders and those waiters and waitresses how, how to deal with those people, things to look for. Um, hey, would you like a Coke on the next round? Can we get you, you know, we'll, we'll get you a cab. I mean, these figures are frightening. That there are that many people driving on our roads three times over the legal limit. And, you know, I don't want them coming at me. But, you know, at the end of the day, or at seven at night, if I've gone out to dinner with your friends, I don't want this guy heading in my direction sixty miles an hour. And I know none of us do. Um, so again, to go back to what I'm saying, what this training does, uh, you know, they're serving a substance that changes people's moods and mindsets... And their abilities to function. And with that comes some, uh, responsibility. Um, so these are the tools that they take back to work with them to make them, uh, better, uh, better at their job, uh... Better at looking for the safety factors, not only for the person who's, who's drinking, clearly, but for the other guy on the road. You know, this, this to me, uh, is just kind of a common sense... Not a cure-all, but certainly could be a real deterrent to these incredibly high DUI figures and the high alcohol content. So I'm proposing that we make, uh, make this mandatory in Ramsey County.
Okay. Do we have any questions for this?
Uh, I just had the same question that I had the first time that it was brought up to my attention, uh, which is... Does the county, under current century code, have the authority to make something like that mandatory? Cause it would be, it would be like an ordinance, right?
I don't know why we would, we have liquor ordinance currently. That's one of the two ordinances we can't have, is, is liquor ordinance and planning ordinance. Planning ordinance. Our current, our, our, just for clarification sake, uh, our clear, our current, uh, our current liquor ordinance... Yep. Under section twenty, has a, has a section on responsible alcohol server training. And currently, uh, it is not a mandatory thing, but, uh, and, and, uh... We, three of us were on the commission when we set this up, so it would've been late six, mid, mid to late sixteen, and it took effect January one of seventeen. Uh, it was not mandatory, but it's used as a, if you fail a compliance check, then it becomes a stipulation of your license. Uh, is how it is currently written. Uh, so we do have a, uh, have it in there, it is something that we ask of establishments, but only if they fail a compliance check and then... There are stipulations where you have to, within ninety days, have your, uh, have your employees go through it, everything. And basically after that, it kind of, I shouldn't say me, excuse me, mirrors, but it's very similar to what the city wrote as an ordinance, basically, that the district health union will provide it to that... Uh, the costs to the business. I think in this situation, we make it, the business will pay the bridge to district health because they actually had an ordinance violation. But in, in the situation that, uh, it was made mandatory, uh, district health pays for, for, uh, for the training, it's just a matter of getting your employees there, basically.
Right. The other thing, though, is that all of these businesses should contact their insurer. There is ability to possibly have a decrease in your insurance premium if you have your staff, uh, trained. Uh, there is some, there, there, they will take that into consideration as far as that, that's business doing their due diligence. And, and making sure that they, you know, they've got everything up to snuff.
Yeah. And if I remember correctly, for, for Jeff and Lucas, uh, last time we, we went over this ordinance, I believe that's, we had some business owners in from the county say that they, they thought it would be... Uh, a burden, so to speak, and I think that's partially why it got switched out to what it was. Um... But the ordinance has a whole bit passed. At that point in time, it was the first time we'd updated the ordinance since like nineteen thirty-two or something like that, so... We didn't, we didn't let the, uh, the perfect get away the good, I think it's personally what it was in my situation, but...
I've got seen that item, uh, Adam, I do believe that, you know... These figures speak for themselves. You know, it's not, if you like to think of every bar owner is, and, and I believe that they are, as much as they have their knowledge... You know, responsible, uh, looking out, you know, for their, for their patrons as well as the people on the road. But the figures are showing us that that's not working.
Liz, who's keeping track of the people that take the course?
I keep, uh, I keep track of it. Uh, Chief Panowski, uh, said that the Devil's Lake Police Department didn't have time to do the compliance checks... And also compliance checks on those who have taken the course.
Have they given some sort of ID card or...
Yes, we use the North Dakota Safety Council course.
Okay.
We find it very, uh, intensive, covers a lot of information in about three and a half hours' time. Maybe receive a certification card that's good for three years and it is transferable, uh, from bar to bar or establishment within North Dakota. So if somebody moved to Fargo, that, that is still good, that has a server training course.
Yeah, and, uh, not to pitch off of this, uh, and under our current statute, uh, our current ordinance, it, it states... If you have that compliance problem and then you're, uh, required to go through the, the testing or the, the training... That each establishment shall, uh, keep a list and then, uh, have the certification sheets of each employee that's certified and who is certified and who is not certified.
Well, here's what I've done, I have a list of everybody who's taken the course from day one three years ago. I even have businesses color-coded. And when the new class comes out, it gets emailed to the businesses. They can see which, you know, all the people that have taken it, they can look at their own, um, color code and see who has and has not. Pro's just asking for one, well, I'm sitting here, I'll be sending it to them. And what we're going to do now, it's mandatory in Devil's Lake is, I will be calling businesses and saying, hey, can I meet with you next week? You know, you have your employee list, I'll have my list, and, and we'll kind of check people off and compare. And we're gonna do this randomly. You know, nobody wants to bother everybody every week about their compliance, but we want them to know that they, that they are gonna be responsible. And then there will be a call made just, to just go and check. So I handle all of that at this point.
You're gonna, you're gonna deal with Starkweather and Edmore and...
Absolutely. Yep. Yep. And they'll just be invited to come in and, and, and attend the course?
Do you think we'll follow up on that?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And, uh, partially, well, you know, why we wanted to put this on the agenda was to have a discussion, number one, get the information out there, number two. But more than anything, if we're going to make a change, it has to be done through the ordinance process, so we'll have, we can't make a change today. But if we decide as a commission, this is something we wanna move in that direction, then we'll have to have a first hearing, secondary process and open up the ordinance again, just like, like we did previously.
As to Devil's Lake, yes, yeah.
So, it's just more for informational and see if that's where we wanna go, because then we can direct the state's attorney to... Kind of put together a draft off of, off of this ordinance and change it to, and then we could, uh, have a hearing process.
I do want to mention too that, uh, you'll see in the Devil's Lake ordinance, that we do have a seventy-five day period... From the time a person is hired... Till they have to take a server training course.
Is there any thought to about putting that server training course available interactively or on internet or...
Well, there are courses, there are courses that are available online. Uh, the kind of situation with that is we thought, you don't know exactly what you're getting and exactly what is being taught. The North Dakota Safety Council course is, is the one that, that the AG's office, uh, recognizes the highest. I've gone and had some great conversations with, with Troy Seibel, uh, Deputy, uh, AG. And, uh, that's the one that he has recommended. Uh, we, as I said, we find it very inclusive. It's also been shown, and I could, and I could actually bring you, uh, we do an evaluation after every class. And invariably, after taking this course, these people, you can see them come in in their life. Oh, I'm, oh, three hours of my time and wah, wah. And they leave saying, wow, this was a terrific class, I didn't know X, Y, Z. Or what a great trainer, I know now, you know, much better how to look for underage IDs and things like that. So, we think it's a lot more effective, you take it face-to-face with a person, you can interact. The bartenders can talk about situations in their own bar, in their own place, and they can immediately ask questions of Officer Gilbertson. Well, what about this? Or what if this happens? So, uh, we recommend to highlight that the first one be the one that you take in person. If you maybe want after your three-year stint, if you wanna take the North Dakota Safety Council course as a renewal... Certainly, I don't have a problem with that, with them doing it online. But I'm finding that the ones now that are coming due, they're just gonna come back to the course again and take it.
Or as warm with that, is if the North Dakota Safety Council could make that easier for people to attend, easier for people to do... Without, you know, waiting the seventy-five days or, you know, oh geez, I have to schedule an extra employee because now I have to go and me and employee X, Y, Z have to go to this training... Uh, for three hours. If we could do it somehow online. You know, cause we, we have all kinds of trainings that are available online. You know, Hunter Education has, has gone to an online, um, certification process. Uh, for high school concussion protocol, parents have to take that, uh, they've gone ahead with a, a, an online course for that. It just makes it convenient for, uh, people's busy schedules to have, have that available quickly and readily at their, at their convenience.
Well, I understand what you're saying, Jeff, but I think this is something that's so important that the first time out, I think it's, it would be, you know, you need to go take the course in person. In the times that we've done in Devil's Lake, we've done them at nine in the morning, we've done them at two in the afternoon, we've done them at six at night. So we try to coordinate for everybody's schedule. We've never had any of the bar owners say to us, we can't get there. We can't get our people there. I just think it's a lot more effective for them taking, taking the class to at least take their initial one in person. That would be, that's my recommendation.
Do we have further questions? Further discussion on this? Okay, uh, as a commission, is this something that we would like to see move forward?
Um, in favor of it? Yeah, why not? Let's, uh, get it on the agenda for a discussion, let's have the, the bar, bar judges come in. Andy, you know, we have to have Kerry, who, who ran the...
Well, yeah, I think that's the first step, I mean, we're gonna, I mean, I can almost, I can't say guarantee, but I'm sure we're going to have some owners that are, that are not in favor of it, simply because it is... It is an additional step in the process.
Well, we're looking at the benefits for them, you know, that reduced insurance premium is, would be a, a big thing, reduced, uh, civil liability, uh, would be the other, you know, so I think there's a benefit for them to have it.
Well, and it also makes their employees more competitive. You know, for some reason you're moving to Fargo, it's not like you can just take the bartender job there without it.
Yep.
Right, right. And, and, and the bottom line is, you know, and, and Jeff makes great sense, you know, that's their incentive, you know, okay. But I think overall incentive should be, we need to decrease these numbers and we need to find a way to do it. And if this is one piece of the puzzle that will help... And it's free and offered to you, I, 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 I believe it's a, it's a win-win for everybody.
I'll make the motion that we start the process of amending our liquor ordinance to include mandatory server training, uh, using the same stipulations that the city has in terms of new hires and the like.
We have motion.
I'll say it.
We have a second. And, uh, obviously, wording could change and stuff like that, but we'll have to have Kerry come up with something in the process, we'll have to approve the wording before we can hear it. Okay. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote the same time. Motion carries. Thank you, Liz.
Thanks, folks, I truly appreciate it. Anybody asking questions, you know, I'm in. Have a great day.
You too. You too. Okay. Kevin? You've been patiently waiting.
Okay. Well, and first up, the discussion on scaffolding for the bridge installation, um... Did check with, uh... Uh, two different scaffolding companies, uh, Acme Tools and... I can't remember the name of them, Grand Forks, but neither one of them had any kind of scaffold that would work for our situation. Um, I do have a picture of this bridge here. Give you a better visual of what we got in mind here. I'll go here and break itself. I did talk to Swinging and they do have a pontoon that's seven feet wide. These are about twice that distance, like twenty-one feet or eighteen feet. So we have to, you know, have that pontoon on each side. And the pontoon won't be, this is about eight foot, so we'd have to have some kind of scaffolding on top of that pontoon. Then we have to move it from cell to cell to cell, to cell to work on these bolts that go the whole distance. So, I mean, that's a possibility, but it'd be a lot more time-consuming and... What I have in mind now is this scaffold is, it'll hang out these piers. We're not gonna use these piers, we're just gonna strap the straps over these piers and then bolt ID or...
Chisel.
To the straps and then put the planks across underneath this way. So they can, you know, just jump from cell to cell, have two crews bolting. One crew on this side bolting and one crew on this side bolting. So... That was a possibility, a pontoon, but it's a lot more time-consuming and...
I mean, this takes a water level dropping by one of these, the next one.
Yeah, next one. Oh, next one. It hasn't come up since, it was probably since it was ice, maybe a foot, not much. But I suppose it might drop another foot too.
How deep does that water get in?
Water's about four feet, you know, like three feet on this end and four feet in the middle. And then this is about eight feet from the water to the bottom beam. Now, the new beams are, this beam is eighteen inches, the new beams are thirty-six inches. So we wanna get somewhere in the middle of those, you know, so you're working more like at this level than at this level.
Kevin, is there any chance we could have, if there is water there, uh, to have lake ridges or to rescue president?
I'm sure they would be open to that. I am gonna get, uh, life preservers, just in case they had their head on the way down or whatever. Don't anticipate anything like that.
How long do you call for dams and then pump and drive?
Wow! Little big time!
Since the bottom end is a pool, it's going.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's that way, a little bit, right?
There's always gonna be water there.
Yeah, and in all honesty, I, you know, this isn't that far from my place. I went and took a look at it after we talked about it at the last meeting about the concept of, is there enough of a deck underneath where maybe you could put some type of a lift that extends out and there's just no bank? It's just a bunch of cat tails and swamp.
Swinging, Swinging told us how they do is just a, those scaffolds, those overhead scaffolds, whatever they call them. But they only go out forty feet, the largest one they make only go straight out forty feet, they'll go up higher. But once they get out forty feet, then they get top here.
Yeah.
So we're sitting at forty feet from this to here is forty feet, the whole thing is eighty. And they would have to be sitting like somewhere over here, just snorkel, put it into the... So they don't actually...
Yeah, and, and the, and the base they would be on, I, I think it would be pretty suspect to get out forty feet off of what, if, if you could even get a decent enough base to sit underneath it.
And, um...
And, and in all honesty, with Kevin and I talked about this probably the last week or whatever, I said, uh, you know, it's, it's a one-time expense to buy treated lumber like that. But he's, he's got a good plan where we've got, uh, uh, you know, trailers, uh, you know, obviously, uh... Flatbeds as well as, you know, that we can reuse the treated lumber as decking and, and we reuse stuff like, we do that every few, you know, whenever it wears out. There's a few different trailers he's got his eye on that are gonna have to be redecked anyway, so by buying it, well, it's not like it's just gonna sit in the shed and we're never gonna reuse it. It's gonna take five, six years, we go through it, but, but it's gonna be, yeah, well, no, Kevin, you're welcome.
I got a deck I need to replace, so I'm...
So it's, it's gonna be reusable. It's, it's not gonna come and then just sit in the shed, it's, it's, and, and in all honesty, I think it's worth the investment to buy it and do it this way, simply because... The crane cost of having the crane sitting there and having double the time to bolt it...
Exactly.
The crane's gonna cost way more than the cost of doing the lumber, so I've come, cause the crane, what, it's five hundred and seventy bucks an hour?
Yep.
To be sitting there. So you wanna have those, yeah, you wanna be ready to bolt and move, bolt and move and get the thing put together so that we're not sitting idle is what it, cause we're... hoping, what, two and a half days basically to have it set and bolted.
Right.
So you're going to have to move pretty quick and you're going to have to have that stuff in place to be able to move it around and get ready to roll. So I, I think, at least in my opinion, this is probably the best solution. I think they thought, you guys, like you said, you thought about it quite a bit and looking at it and this is just a matter of, you know.
And safety too, that's the reason.
So you'll be able, you know, it'll have nice footing under it. You'll have a nice safety rail on and everything. It's, it's probably the best way to do it. And, and like you said, we're, we're going to reuse the lumber, so.
Yeah, I would say, I think advertising it would, you know, be of value to somebody, you know, if you need it all or what you want.
The tops of our gravel boxes, you know, that very stock frame that's ever used, so we all need to bust it off.
It's, it's not going to be wasted.
Like I said, it'd take us five years, five or six years to use it up.
But it's treated lumber able to sit in the, it'll just sit in the shed and reuse it as we need it.
Yeah. So the cost of that locally, find my notes here, yeah. Was twenty-two, two thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars for the two by tens that we need. And then of course, out of town was one thousand, four hundred and twenty-three.
Twenty-two oh three, is that what you said?
Twenty-two, twenty-three, yeah.
Seven hundred dollar difference.
All right, motion by openly.
Um, I'm fine with that.
Back it up.
We have a motion and a second to buy two by tens for bridge installation, scaffolding, one please. Do we have any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same side.
What, call it?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I should roll call it. I, roll call please.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lightfoot?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. It was already all on our.
Yes, thanks for that. Thank God, voters. Like, like we talked about last week, I'm sure you guys sat there and looked at it and said, well, the heck are we going to do for quite a few hours? Because it's, it's a little different process than painting a bridge where they have the ones where you can hang them and all that. This is kind of a different situation, so.
Well, we're really concerned about safety.
Yeah.
We're getting worried.
Okay.
Uh, crane rentals, I just, Wanzig is the firm that I've got so far and that's pretty close to what we had figured is nineteen thousand, seven sixty-five. Now, I did contact, uh, shoot, I can't think of the name now. Here.
Porsha.
Porsha in Fargo and they went up and looked at the bridge and they just haven't gotten a price yet, but, um, I guess we should probably wait to get a price for them before we hire them.
And you said Swinging wasn't going to be available because their, their are all out, so. Yeah, we wait for that second bid then.
Yeah, Wanzig is available.
Mm-hmm, yep, they've.
They sent somebody with it, okay.
Well, yeah, in fact, I requested two people because I didn't want to be responsible for rigging a big, one guy is automatic, but I requested two.
Yeah, so they're going to have the operator and a rigger and then our guys, yeah, the two raiders. And then our guys are just going to be doing the bolting. That's their expertise and that's what they're going to do, so. Not have to worry about the crane work then, which is nice.
Right.
I think that's a, that's a good approach to it. That means we've got more free hands to get the bolting done quicker too and get it done in due fashion.
Is this, uh, the, the bridge material scheduled to arrive a certain date and we need to put it in when it arrives?
Uh, it can sit on the road, I guess, but the crane thing as a whole.
So the, so the crane thing is kind of continued on that. So it almost behooves us to move forward and schedule the crane and.
Exactly, otherwise they, yeah, they, you know, get hooked with something else. So I'd make a motion
to go ahead with the bid that Kevin asked.
Okay. We have a motion to go with the bid from Wanzig for the crane. So that it gets scheduled to be accepted.
How's that going to happen? Do you want to wait for that second one or?
I think these guys have better.
Better, I mean, okay, that's fine.
You think Wanzig's going to be better priced?
I do think they'll be better priced, but I can't swear.
Yeah, yeah.
One other question. We need a crane not mowed this bridge?
Yes, yes. It's off the truck.
Truck show down.
Yeah. And, and, and the bridge is scheduled to be here on, what, the sixteenth of July? And, and, and Kevin, if I'm talking about this last week, it sounds like we're basically going to have to have the road closed there for above a month.
Yeah, by, by.
Between, uh, ripping up the old bridge and everything and then building the scaffolding in place and then, because when that bridge shows up, it's got to be, it's no time. So everything, so even if we're done a week ahead of time with all the prelim work, prelim work has to be done when that bridge shows up.
It builds with you, let's keep this in place.
Yeah.
Okay. Further discussion on, uh, approving, uh, the Wanzig bid at nineteen seven sixty-five for the crane. Seeing none, roll call please.
Olson?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lightfoot?
Aye. Motion carries. We can get that scheduled.
And just a heads up on that, that is figuring two full days for that crane. So if it's less, it'll be less, but, but more, it'll be a little more.
They're charging by per the hour?
Yes, they are. Yeah.
Like you said, the, 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 what you, the mold costs are about half of that cost?
Yes, they are. Moles are ten thousand, eleven thousand dollars rather than eighteen thousand.
Fifty-five hundred bucks to haul it from Grand Forks to haul it back.
Yep, each way. Typical, I mean, even more shine would be that way.
Maybe pot for all the load to mend, I'm sure.
Yep, exactly.
That's a big thing. Okay.
All right. I'm lost here. Okay, I do pick up this year and I guess we didn't have the motion paid for that, so. No action, moral action required there, but I do have, um, some utility permits from Ramsey County Rural Water. Two of them were to bury water lines and one of us to bury a sewer line. Uh, the sewer line is on Ramsey County going, uh, just a little ways west of State Highway. There's a new house going in there. And I think that sewer line is going to serve two homes. There's been a home that's not there yet, but, but that's coming from metals. And then the two water lines, one is, uh, further west of the milk, or the, while I drive the one, Rich Schwab is going to put in some counter locks or whatever there. And he needs to get water over there on the north side of that way, water on the south side. So that one will be deep, very deep, continuous, one hole wide, continuous line. And the other water line was on Ramsey two out here by Holly's. Uh, the old football coach, that Holly across this solid.
Home.
Yep, South Home and that Holly, the water line there. And I honestly don't see any reason not to have these, uh, they're all going to be, they're not going to be encased, but they are going to be the heavier, thicker pipe. It'll be one continuous pipe. It won't be any joints from, in our right way. Won't be any joints in our right way.
Okay. And there is, okay, we have a motion to approve.
Aye.
And we have a second. And this is for how many different locations?
Three different locations.
Three different places. Okay, so a motion and a second to approve all three permits to grant the water district to, uh, put a pipe in our right way. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay. Okay, back down to new business then. Uh, Keno Township assessing contract.
Move it through.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the assessing contract with Keno Township. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Same side for opposition. Motion carries. Approval of a special permit, uh, for, uh, Thursdays for, uh, by Ron.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the special permits. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same side. Motion carries. This time it is approved. Transfer of funds. We have two separate transfers.
Motion to approve.
Okay, second. We have a motion and a second to approve both transfers. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same side. Motion carries. Visitors and delegations. George.
I just have one question. Inasmuch as the, uh, director at the Lake Village Heritage Center has been gone since last September and the museum basically, as I understand, has been closed since the end of March, does the county continue to fund?
That question has been asked of me. I have asked the question of the board chair at the Heritage Center and she has agreed to come in and talk with us about their plan going forward. Um, we're hoping to get it scheduled for the next meeting to have that discussion with a long-term goal in mind of what's, what's the plan for the Heritage Center. Uh, I think that discussion, uh, with the plan for the Heritage Center going forward will determine, you know, what's, what's going to happen in our funding round for the nineteen budget. That would be my opinion and my description of what's going to occur.
Did you give me any idea?
As in?
What's your plan with Heritage Center?
See, the idea of, uh, you know, yeah, I think we should probably let Commissioner Wakefield speak to us.
I got a, one other question, Kevin, what, do you know anything, what, give me an idea?
I don't think it was that easy fix or you couldn't, it wasn't something you could fix in a half a day or.
So it's all like, you know, look at it and call this or?
Yep, that was my feeling. I, I don't know that for a fact. I think that's what's going to happen, yes.
Okay, that, that was the sound of what I heard as well.
Concerned about getting it done.
Right.
Go ahead.
Uh, so to speak a little bit towards what has happened with the Heritage Center. Um, the director that, that was hired, um, had, uh, some, uh, family issues and some changes and circumstances. Uh, and at that point, she felt, uh, inappropriate to, to, to vacate the job and to move back to her home. Uh, at which point we did not have a director and there was one employee who was a longstanding assistant director. Uh, we had discussions with the assistant director about whether or not she would be interested in being the director. Uh, she expressed that she was, uh, categorically not interested in being the director. Uh, at which point, uh, given the fact that we now had one employee and, and, and we were very surprised and caught off guard by the, the director announcing that she was leaving, uh, we had to, to continue the functioning of the Heritage Center, give some of the, uh, responsibilities to the assistant director with the understanding that that would be a temporary arrangement. We opened a round for hiring for a new director. I think we got somewhere between six and eight applicants. So I can't remember now. It's been a few months. Uh, of those, uh, we felt that none of them were qualified nor appropriate to, to be the director. Um, I, I was actually very discouraged, um, by the, the, the quality of the applicants we received. Uh, at that point, we decided that we could not move forward in good conscience with any of those applicants and we reopened, uh, another round for, for hiring for the, uh, director. In that time, uh, the assistant director, uh, decided that she no longer wanted to continue in her capacity as now acting as the director, as she had stated she had no interest, uh, and that left us with no employees. At which point, uh, the Heritage Center Board, uh, decided that the Heritage Center would operate temporarily, uh, as, as a request-only, uh, museum. Uh, we put signs up on the door that say, if you would like to view any of the exhibits, if you would like to do any research, uh, here's contact information for various board members. And we took it upon ourselves on a volunteer basis and opened up the Heritage Center and to give tours, uh, since which time we've had several tours, we've also had several, uh, events that have happened in there. Uh, so I, I think it would be, uh, not entirely correct to say that the museum is no longer in operation. It's in operation at the best of our current capacity. So I think that's.
Yeah, there's still been multiple events there the last few months in terms of, uh, usage. And I think there's actually Chautauqua event around Wednesday night, correct?
Yeah.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, and we've got, I mean, there's, somebody's going to have a wedding reception there. Um, and we've had, we've had many, many groups, uh, that, that have been using it as an, as an event space. Now that the main floor has been, uh, you know, re, reworked so that it's open. Um, we had our gala on the main floor and that was well attended. Um, so there have definitely been some changes, uh, and not all of those changes were well received by, uh, board members who are no longer board members. Um, and I can understand why. Um, but I think that we're doing, or, or rather the Heritage Center has been doing the best that it can with, with the hand that it was dealt. Uh, you'll recall that, uh, they were losing significant amounts of money and I brought that concern to, to both that board and this commission. Um, at this point, the, the budget is, is solvent again, which is helpful when you don't have anybody to pay. So, uh, it's, it's possible to, to continue operating uh, this way until such time as a, as a, as a qualified applicant is found.
So are you currently looking for a director?
Yes, and the board made a motion at the last board meeting to extend a, a hiring offer, but I don't have any more information than that.
Okay. Yeah, and Kelly had made, commented that effect too, that there was going to be a hiring offer going out, but she didn't have any information past that at that point and if it was going to be accepted or whatnot, so.
Yeah, well, I, I can confirm that the, that the board voted to, to extend an offer for employment, but I, I don't know the status of that. And I'll let you know as soon as I get it.
Okay. Further discussion on that?
What's the pay for that? Just curious.
I, I don't recall and I don't want to, I don't want to make a statement without, without knowing exactly what it is. So are, are you looking for a director or an event coordinator? A director. Because the last thing I saw online was event coordinator. I think at that point we still had a director. I'm not sure.
Okay. George, you look like you had something with a question or?
Well, I, I guess I read that job description online and it was, I think over two pages long. Uh, I don't think that the Lord himself could have met the requirements for ten dollars an hour part-time. That was the way it was worded then. It has subsequently changed. Uh, and I guess, I don't think the, the first one that was listed, you're ever going to find anybody to meet those qualifications. And, and even now, ten dollars an hour is not going to get the person I don't believe that you, that you need in a, in a facility like that.
Yeah, and I believe that was for the event coordinator concept, the part-time thing. The director's going to be a completely different, two, two different jobs for, essentially. That's how I understand it, at least at this point in time.
They're trying to hire two different people?
Well, no, they were trying to hire an event coordinator when they still had the director previously. Now that's kind of gone by the wayside. They're trying to hire a director to get everything running, keeping the doors open. And then from there, they'll come up with a strategic plan on if they're going to hire any more staff or if it's just going to be the director or whatnot.
Is, are you still paying an accountant monthly?
No. Okay. Okay. Further discussion on that. Are there questions?
There's a question we have, although we're going to stay on that rope. I'll do that, I think.
I don't know, kind of out of the loop on that now, so I don't know the word.
You're out of loop?
Yeah.
What roof are you talking about?
The roof is leaking on the Heritage Center.
Right.
Yeah, the, if you would talk to Dan Dosh, previous maintenance person, that leak basically is coming from a drain pipe on the west end of the building. I don't think there's a roof leak.
It don't, there is definitely a roof leak.
Is there? Okay.
Yeah.
They got, uh, what's his name, Gilbertson?
Yep, up there. One of those raining.
Yeah, the guy up there.
Okay.
And they're up there, one of those raining and it's not the pipe. I would figure that out. It's where the water comes into the pipe.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, Gilbertson, apparently Mike Gilbertson from the inner opening was coming up with a plan on how to fix it. Uh, and when I talked to Kelly last week, she stated that she was just waiting to hear back from him on Estimetis and on a bid.
Exactly.
Uh, so whenever she hears back then.
She's trying to get her bid?
Yes, she's on top of it. So, so whenever she gets a bid back, they'll be able to see if it's something they can handle in terms of the, the costs that are associated, associated with it. She said that, uh, in talking with Mike, he made it sound as though it's not going to be a super expensive job. It's just a matter of, she needs to hear back from him on the, on the schedule and what the cost is going to be, so. So it's, it's still in the works, yeah.
What you do as a director, you know, let's get the roof fixed.
Yeah.
We now, uh.
The day we were there, it was, uh, leaking up in the northwest corner.
Right.
This was the south, southeast is where that pipe is.
Okay.
So we have a couple differences in other words.
Has there been damage to the? Has there been damage to the, the ceiling in the courtroom?
Yes, there is.
Yeah. Significant or not?
It's, it's ugly, but it's not destroying the material yet.
Oh, okay.
It's a stain. Put it that way, it looks like a big stain.
It's fixable, and still, we gotta get her done before it gets bad.
Yeah, we leak in a year or so, that's really not.
But George, Dave, ease your mind. I, I think the commission itself is committed to the viability of that Heritage Center moving forward.
I would hope so.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I don't think that's a question from my mind, that we, we wanna, we wanna see it. I, I think there, there might be the question of how you retool the exhibits and what's gonna be there, you know.
Oh, I don't have a problem with that at all.
Yeah, actually, I was talking with, I don't think you would mind, but I said with, uh, can't remember his name off the top of my head now. Phil Rindrup, who's taking over the Maritime Museum.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And he's been talking with Kelly about possibly doing some type of, uh, not maybe just maritime, but a lake region history and the military type of exhibit, rotating it through there, what pieces that they have out of the Maritime Museum.
You know, that was, that idea was approached before when Bloomsland was, was running the Maritime Museum, and, and there was an individual in this community that was violently opposed to that, and it was Tom Nissler. You know, and, and we had, we had some discussions about that, and, and I think it was suggested at that time that the Maritime Museum move out to the guard camp and combine it with their museum out there. And Tom didn't like that either, so I'm not sure where that ever went, but.
Well, and, and I don't think it's necessarily in this situation that what they're talking about isn't necessarily moving the Maritime Museum at this point in time. And it's just a matter of taking some of the specific items and sharing some things.
Sharing some exhibits.
Yeah, because, you know, the Maritime Museum, we don't have the, they don't, they just basically only have the ability to staff it on those bigger holidays when there's something going on in the, you know, like the Veterans Day events we have, the Memorial Day events we have in the courthouse, and then they have it open so people can go see it at the same time. But this would allow some of those artifacts and, and things to be seen, hopefully, if we have a director on staff a year around then, which I think is a fantastic idea.
To add to that, seeing as we're on the topic, and he agreed actually to become a Heritage Center board member, the, the library director. The Heritage Center and the board, the Heritage Center and the library board came to an agreement where the library would host an exhibit. So that, that would be a possibility there.
Good idea.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I, I think how the, the Heritage Center is utilized might change slightly, but I think, you know, more Chautauqua events and things like that now would be a fantastic thing if we could continue to do those.
But those events, a lot of the Chautauqua events don't take place physically in the museum.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying that anytime, anytime we can kinda combine and work with other entities that have some type of historical aspect, I think is a positive.
You know, you know, I just wanna share another thought. I think in terms of the long-term future of that building, and, and it's an iconic building in the community, obviously, that in, in lieu of the money that the county puts in, and in lieu of the money that the city puts in, which is quite a bit more than the county puts in, it, it would make some sense, their plan be put together, that that becomes a city-county facility funded by the two entities and, and controlled by those two entities, rather than trying to operate always by begging money and donated funds. Just a thought, and, and maybe that's the way to, to build the long-term future of that facility. And not only is it a museum, but can be used for community events, so on and so forth. I don't know that, you know, that, that would take some planning to put that kinda thing together. But that would ensure the long-term future of that, of that in downtown Salt Lake, I think.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's a beautiful building. We need to utilize it. And we, hopefully utilize it more than we utilize it now, because it really is a fantastic facility if we can, you know, get it rolling in the right direction with a good strategic plan. So I think that's the thought process that they have. It's just a matter, well, get some more information when I can get Kelly scheduled to come in and visit with us. And I wanted to do it before we do, uh, start our budgeting round, so we can kinda hear what the plans are and things like that. So, but I appreciate you bringing it up, George.
Thank you.
Any other visitors? Any other visitors in here? Okay, portfolios. Lucas.
Well, we've touched on Heritage Center, so I guess I'm good on that. The only other thing that I would say is the, the Lake Region Library, and I think I may have mentioned this, but I'll mention it again in case I didn't, accepted a bid for the outdoor reading garden. And so the cost of that project will be about ninety thousand dollars. And it's going to include fencing around the garden. It'll include shrubbery and bushes and the like, a couple of trees that will be planted, several park benches, some paving stones. And what I think is especially nice, and once I've got the, the real, the real drawings for everyone, I'll bring them to show them. There is going to be a, a sort of low set of concrete bleachers, basically, so that you can do outdoor classes as the middle school, or if anyone else would like to use it, or if there are summer reading programs, you can have people sit outside and listen. So I think that that'll be a, a very nice space once it's done. Fifty percent of the cost of the project is already spoken for. So from the community, we'll be looking to raise somewhere in, in the ballpark of fifty thousand dollars to complete the project. The board is not concerned that that'll be difficult to do. We intend to sell names on benches with plaques, you know, paving bricks, stones that'll be put in, and then as well as our wall plaque, you know, for, for the names at different formation levels. So that'll be the process by which that happens. In addition to that, the library director has decided to enforce a policy of not allowing people to continue to check out items from the library if they have any overdue fines levying against them. So in the past, that continued to happen. The director came in, he was able to find about sixty thousand dollars worth of unpaid library dues, library fines. So at that point, the library board had a discussion about how to, to see about recouping some of that and to ensure that it wouldn't happen going forward. So the month of April was free amnesty for anything. And normally, there, I think, is, there's a, there's a day or a week, I think that the library has a free amnesty week in the month this year. And then at that point, the board decided to go back to just ten years and, and seek, you know, the things that were older than that, I mean, I was of the opinion that the records could have been lost, and it just wasn't. And, and, you know, I mean, and everything else is a statute of limitations, right, you know, so.
Just, just bring your books back.
Right, so, so that, that, and I think has been a good change. Several members of the community were, were slightly upset, and I think when it was explained to them that in fact they did have a five-year-old overdue library book, most, most were quite willing to pay up and, and to continue on. So I think, you know, there's a little bit of turbulence in the short term and the long term. I think it will make for a better library and ensure that we don't have, you know, sixty thousand dollars worth of publicly funded taxpayer dollars walking out and sitting on somebody's shelf. We're going to do the trash. So I figured I'd give you that update as well. Not sure that I have anything else. Oh, Home Rule, right, there you go. The Home Rule Charter Committee is going to have first of three public meetings, these are not hearings, they're meetings to take public comment and, and to give a sense for whether or not the community feels that the Home Rule Charter Committee is down in the right direction with the draft document, which has now been completed, at least in a, in an initial finalized form, if that makes sense. The first meeting will be held tonight at five thirty in the Armory. The second meeting will be held at seven PM in the Edmore Schoolhouse. And, and I, I have to confirm that tomorrow, yes, starting tomorrow. And then be the sixth, and then the seventh, there will be another meeting here in the Armory at seven. Seven to seven. So hopefully, most members of the community will have access to one of those. We wanted to make sure that it wasn't so far on the drive, and to make the northern reaches of the county field included, so we decided to have one meeting in Edmore. Unfortunately, I'll not be able to attend that one, but I'm hoping that, yeah. And then at that point, I expect that the, the Charter Committee will have one or two more meetings. And then at that point, it'll be time to schedule a hearing. And then at that point, the county commission can expect to get an upper-down recommendation on whether or not the Charter Committee feels it's, it's beneficial to the county.
Question line, closing the shade?
Yes, okay.
Either that or have Ron over the vehicle, sun it, clear off the windshield.
You didn't wanna see anywhere, did you? Otherwise, you're looking at my ugly mug.
Perfect, thank you.
Just so that people are aware, the, the changes that, that are in the charter in, in the current form would include the ability to levy a sales tax, provided that it go to the board and people. The offices in the county courthouse that are, are elected will remain elected, and the scope of all of the offices is going to remain unchanged. There, there could be no change to that unless there was an amendment brought before the people, which would require, you know, fifty percent up on that, in order for that process to start, if, if that was the desire. It would allow the county to institute a, a wider range of ordinances and resolutions. And it would also allow for the citizens to initiate or refer ballot measures provided that they are able to pass certain, you know, requirements, right? So it's, what was it, fifteen percent of three hundred?
Yeah.
Whichever is higher. So fifteen percent of the, the electorate that voted in the last gubernatorial election, or three hundred, whichever ends up being higher. And the reason that we put that three hundred was just to make sure that there wouldn't be some bizarre incident where you'd have an artificially low number of people voting.
I think another thing to note is that on the taxation portion of it, we, we, we try our best to scope it so it's very, very particular, not limited necessarily, but so if it's, if you're asking for a certain type of taxation, sales tax, for instance, it, it has to be stated what the project is, what the timeframe is for payment, and that there will be no ability to not sunset.
You have to.
You have to sunset that specific, yes. And then we also stated that.
It's not a century code, that was the way that we worked it.
Yeah, that's the way we worked it, cause you can, you can have an open standing tax, like a sales tax like the city does, like their infrastructure one, that's in perpetuity. That they just passed.
Didn't, didn't the Charter have a, you know, basically, whatever you put it on the ballot as asking for, that's what it's for? So if it's for a particular project, then it has to have a sunset. I think we, we allow for, we allow for a standing sales tax, provided that on the ballot, it says that it's a standing sales tax.
Yes, and then that standing sales tax, say it's just a straight infrastructure tax for highways or something like that, at, at, was it eight or twelve years, you have to re-ask the public to re-up that tax, so that it's not a perpetuity thing. It's, we think additional sales tax collections for the next eight years will over highway system. And then in eight years, you have to, as the public say, we're fine with this, or, or it just sunsets at that point.
We can't put something on that's never-ending.
Yes, if, there's, there's no availability of a never-ending anything. It's gonna be pretty strict and structured, but it'll allow the flexibility for the county to necessarily use a different taxation structure to pay for something if it needs to.
Specific project.
Yes, for a specific project or a specific use. And, and even, even like that eight-year re-up, the specific use still has to be there, so this tax is gonna be used for general, a highway, or.
It can be a little bit, a little raw in terms of it's not for a specific project, but yeah.
But it, but you have. We're gonna essentially allow people the ability to say, we're gonna keep this on or we're not gonna keep this on. And, and we thought that was a good way to start.
The initiation and referral portion would allow the, the citizenry to ask for a sales tax too. So, you know, if, if there was a large portion of the population who wanted like a, a Ramsey County beach, you know, something like that, they, they could initiate that, that request on the ballot without the county commission being involved.
And, and in all honesty, this isn't necessarily the finalized version. This is just where we came up to, and, and we're gonna take public input, cause we want this essentially alpha version to roll into a really good version that when we go to the public hearing, everyone's kinda, I mean, you're not gonna get everybody on board, but obviously that people are comfortable with. And, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Do you have handouts for these public meetings tonight?
Yes.
Yep, we have, we have.
There'll be a full draft available, and we'll, we'll also have summary versions of what's changing and what's not changing. I don't have one with me. I'll get a print one for you.
I've got one for you right after the meeting. Yep, we have it all available, it's just revealed on. Louvinson's gonna get it printed after the meeting for the city council.
That's right.
Okay, give me the L.
That's it for me?
Yeah.
I'll try to focus on the jail. Bob Worlinger was here about two weeks before, on Monday afternoon, stayed through Friday, we met with him at the whole board out there. Lots of things to work on, yeah. They're not ready to lift the closure notice. He's coming back, I believe. He hadn't told me when, but it's gonna be, I don't think it'll be this month, I think it'll be in October. And as everybody knows, first September is our year, so. He found a lot of things that he needed to work on. Very beneficial, the board felt that he was there, and he's involving a lot of people. He's very upbeat about the camera system that we're putting in. It was common in the meeting, one of the cameras that we have, you can just well turn them off. They're similar to what the courthouse was. You can't make anybody out, you can probably wear that job. Like I said, lots of things to work on. Shower doors. Only a big obstacle we've had for nine months. I thought there was a half a dozen, you know, there's thirteen. And the point he made at the meeting a week ago Friday was we've no any shower doors, we're not in compliance, cause there was no doors at all. And in nine months, we had replaced three of them. He's not only chewing out the administration, he's chewing out the board. Needless to say, I've been after our management a number of times to stay on it and get it done. And so last week, they're about ninety-five percent done with the shower doors, Sheriff Nelson told me. So that was a good report to add on Friday. And I did have another conversation with Mr. Worlinger on the phone Friday, and he gave me some updates on how last week went with his correspondence with the law enforcement center, and things seem to be improving. So we're not out of the woods yet. And I think we're coming, I think it's, it was very beneficial for him to come up here and spend approximately four days here. I know it costs the law enforcement center some money, and that'd be very well worth it, I feel. Like I said, he's coming back in July. I think he's gonna probably spend the same amount of time again, three to four days. This time, he wants to meet with the board and the employees of the law enforcement center first, before he starts his three or four days here, to ask the question, how did the things that we implemented go? Are they worthwhile? We need to jump through their hoops. That's it. I believe the management at the law enforcement center does understand that now. You know, they're the one that can tell us, keep it open or shut the door.
But, you know, the, the first line out of his mouth was this didn't happen in the last six months, this didn't happen in the last year. This happened in the last twenty years. So we're trying to fix twenty years of mistakes. Things that, and they, they admit that they're guilty of it too, that, you know, they probably should have brought this up, and they never did. And now we, now we got to the point where all these things need to be fixed, all at once. So, you know, he was, he was very adamant that, you know, this isn't this board's fault, this isn't, this goes back years. And then, and then you pile on the other, the roof, the ceilings, the locks, all this other stuff, it was.
Shower use.
Shower doors, yep. You know, and you and I just think of a shower door. Well, some inmate's gonna gank the other inmate's head and pound it against the shower door. You know, there's, there's all these just the silliest things that you and I don't think about. Laundry soap. That was one that he brought up the other day, was laundry soap. You can get high on the laundry soap. Did you know that? I never knew that. So, I mean, it was just the amount of baggage that we're trying to unload, so. And, and we're, we're getting through it, and like Ed said, the, the, the members of the board now were a lot more. And we're, and we're getting through it, and like Ed said, the, the, the members of, of the board now, we're a lot more enlightened than maybe we were before. I mean, it was a couple-hour meeting, he, he sat down and told us things that, you know, we, we didn't really know. So, I think it's huge, huge steps forward.
Yeah, he's very thorough, and, uh, like I said, it's, that's a loop we gotta jump through, so. We gotta satisfy them, they're the ones who give us the right to stay open or limit our ability to house prisoners. And, uh, if we get put on this level two or level three, uh, nobody's gonna be happy with that, not at all.
Yeah, see, that's, I, I, I don't wanna ask the question, but I feel I have to, because it is already soon. Has the board had the discussion on what happens if by September first, we don't get this lifted? What's our plan?
Um, it hasn't, they haven't had a discussion, I guess the goal is to get lifted.
Yeah, obviously, that's the goal, but I mean, what, what happens if not everything, is there a chance of an extension, and is there?
I haven't asked that question.
You know, I'm just curious.
I, I did ask that question, they can extend it out, if, if everything's good.
If they're seeing progress, it can extend, okay, so it's, it's not necessarily a hard deadline.
No, 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 it's not.
But we have to keep showing progress.
But like Ed said, we only go to that level two, because that, that's a, a hold for ninety-six hours, so essentially, the whole sheriff's.
Well, so there's, there's a level, if you.
Yeah, no, yeah, so essentially, if that happened, your whole sheriff's department would be doing nothing but hauling people around the countryside.
Three days.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, about four days.
There's three other deals that they're at, I mean, they're monitoring, they're watching over more closely than some, you know. Some of them are in compliance, but it's something we need to take care of, I mean, I, it's not, it's an easy task, you know, like, uh, nothing here, I guess. It's, uh, it's moving, it's recurring, and Worlinger knows we're trying, so I, I hope we gotta do things fast, and the shower doors are a big thing. There are issues. Other than that, I guess, seeing the military side and social services, we could step on it now, we're going.
I'll touch up when we do the last thing.
Okay. Well, let's see, Airport Authority, you know, we met a couple weeks ago, um, there's been some work there, we did get the Sky West, uh, for the essential air service continuation, uh, which is great news. You know, there's no, gonna be no changes in that, so we'll continue the service to Denver. We did just get a, a notification that there's some money available for a smaller new lead limit, which we were looking at anyway, but, uh, we're looking at. We just, uh, had a special meeting to authorize advertising for that equipment last week, and somewhere in the neighborhood of six, over six hundred thousand dollar worth of stuff, and there's a five percent open match. So it was kinda, I don't know, brainer to get up, uh, replace all the old outdated equipment that we already had, uh, that we needed to replace anyway. And, so, and then, uh, John's gonna send the, his crew over to Grant Works to take a look at, um, the chemicals that they use for their de-icing. So we can stay open during a freezing rain event or something like that, where we don't have that capability now. So if we could somehow purchase some of their, um, chemicals that they use over there and find a way to, you know, apply it, uh, that'd be a very beneficial for the Devil's Lake Airport. For some reason, our numbers are down, and we're not sure exactly why, if it's, uh, summer vacation season, or if it's, you know, what it is, but past couple of months, our, our boardy numbers have been significantly lower than what they have been in the past. Whether or not it's national guard training, that's utilizing it, not utilizing it, um, kind of thing, but, you know, I think it'll rebound and get back on track. Chamber, we met a couple weeks ago as well, um, you know, they had their big event, or they helped with a big event that was run this past weekend, they always do the registration at the chamber office. Uh, they'll have their chamber wall determined at the end of this month, uh, they always request board help for that, for the weigh-ins and that thing, different things like that. All the accessible fishing piers, docks are in the water now unusable, uh, I was up to the channel A one here a week ago, and it's being used, there's a lot of people up there catching fish, it looked like, so. So good, good deal, you know, you heard from Bill, I talked to Sheriff Nelson, uh, things are going good in his department, he was gonna go and check on the progress of his vehicles that he had ordered. You know, once those get completed and then get the radios and everything transferred over and the cameras and, and that kind of thing, and that can be up and operational, but new deputies working on great, um, so things are going good there.
Yeah, anything else?
Well, we do have a, a water tour, uh, Red River Basin Commission is, uh, having their board member tour in Devil's Lake tomorrow. They're gonna tour parts of the city of Devil's Lake and the Dyke of Abeyment, uh, surrounding the city, they'll take a look at the East End Outlet, uh, the town truly controlled structure, and then they'll head back to, to Grant Works for their board meeting the following morning. Uh, we have our annual joint board tour the twentieth, the third Wednesday of the, you know, and we'll head out a lot of the eastern side of the, of the basin, uh, we wanna take a look at the Michigan's, the way that Nelson Tony worked on, I don't know, twenty years before they got it up and operational. Water projects do not, uh, happen overnight, uh, that's the, that's the big issue, but they're able to pump water out that lake, the river, the school, and then north of Dakota, all the way over to north of Michigan area over there, you know, it started off at about a two-hundred-and-eighty acre, uh, water, body of water, and a few years ago, it was over twenty-two thousand acres. And, uh, really encroaching on the city of Michigan and, and things like that, but they created a pump system, you know, similar to what we have on our outlets, but they're only doing fifty CFS over to the Forest River, which then goes through the Mad Chick Dam and, and Walsh County. And so there's some constraints in there, but that, that they had to work out, but they're really reclaiming a lot of property over that area for their aid producer, which is good news. If anybody's interested in the water tour, let me know, uh, joint board always pays for, uh, elected officials, um, press, if Louise would like to come along, or, um, or has any staff that would like to come along, we have, uh, openings for that. It's an all-day tour, you know, we do it at eight-thirty, we get back by around four-thirty-five, but it's, uh, we provide all the snacks, uh, water, beverages, we have lunch, we're gonna do lunch at East Bay, uh, camp ground, their new, uh, Odessa Event Center over there. Bill and Delwood, and so we're gonna take a tour of their facilities over there and, and all the expansions that they've done over the years, and then have lunch at their new event center, so. Should be a good day, good tour.
Okay.
That's it.
Yeah, I'll say. Marc?
Uh, talk about the law enforcement center, uh, I got a lake access meeting coming up, and I have a fair board meeting coming up, other than that, everything else, I'm very quiet.
Okay. Uh, myself, I took social services, we had a meeting last month that they can do. Nothing really credible to report, we're running a little bit under budget, so that's good, uh, but they seem to be going fairly smoothly. Uh, we're gonna, uh, try to, uh, promote the school system on doing some more, uh, help with that. County housing authority, uh, nothing too big to report there, uh, we were doing some work for HUD, uh, to, uh, correct some, uh, section eight things that, uh, were going on, but everything seems to be going poorly there pretty smoothly. One more we talked about, um, for Devil's Lake, uh, new director, I believe, is started now, I haven't talked to, I haven't had many, I haven't had a chance, but, uh, we have a meet, meet up Thursday, it's the ranch, so. Meet our director, I can't remember what time it starts at, oh, I think it's like six o'clock, I'm totally sure, but everyone should have got an email on that. Virgins and Angel is here, Kevin's here, Og is here, so I don't have anything to add there. Looking to ask, I think everything's moving along fairly well, moving in construction season, so, lots of stuff to get done. You need to quit raining, so I guess we're. Anything else? Seeing nothing, had anything more to do here?